Hello. Hello there.
Thank you, Commissioner. You can move on.
Well. We were very broken up, but we'll do the best we can.
Wow. That's better.
Ready, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Good afternoon. It is one thirty on Monday, the second of October. And I am Vice Chairman Luke Ommitt. Commissioner Bradshaw is attending this hearing remotely and Commissioner Williams is also present. And today we are here for two items, which is a action item discussion decision regarding file S zero 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 two dash two three Providence subdivision, followed by a comprehensive map amendment file AM zero zero one zero dash two three. Our first file that we will hear today will be the Providence Road subdivision. We are streaming online via Zoom and YouTube. And if there's anyone who needs visual hearing or other impairment, please let us know at this time.
Do what?
Did you have something to add there, Commissioner?
Nothing.
Okay, and at this time I will call for a conflicts of interest. Commissioner Bradshaw?
I have no conflict.
Mr. Williams?
I have no conflict.
I have none, but for the interest of disclosure, I did attend a brief part of the zoning commission hearing for approximately thirty minutes and have been advised by council to let everyone know that it will not affect my decision. Here are the public hearing procedures. Staff will first present.
Hey, Luke.
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
Uh, is Mike Hammick the developer on this?
Yes.
Okay, I've known Mike Hammick for thirty-four years. But it won't affect my decision.
Thank you. So if the, uh, people that are in attendance would like to look at the screen, staff will present their staff report followed by the applicant providing an overview of the project where he can answer questions from the board. And then it will be followed by public testimony. Uh, there will be testimony in support of the project followed by neutral testimony or those that are opposed. Public testimony will be limited to three minutes. Exhibits must be numbered prior to testimony. Exhibit will be retained by the county and testimony must be specific to the project code compliance. If there are members that, if there are a group of people that would like to have multiple people, they can give their time to uh, a single presenter. In regards to repetition, if you are going to be repeating, remarks have been made, please just say agree. Following the public testimony, the applicant will have an opportunity to rebut. The hearing will then be closed. If there is any new information presented during the applicant rebuttal, the hearing will be reopened. And then deliberation will begin. I'm going to wait for the proceedings on the staff report until Commissioner Williams returns. As a general piece of information, I will be calling recesses about every hour so that staff and the members of the public can get up and utilize facilities or just stretch their legs, get some fresh air. Go ahead, Mr. Spoggy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. We are here for the, uh, for the hearing of Providence subdivision. I'll try my best. You'll be louder. So this is a hearing for Providence subdivision file S zero 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 two dash two three. The applicant is requesting to plot approximately thirty-nine point five seven acres of unplanted land into hundred and sixteen residential lots with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet or more. The project also proposes to create non-residential utility tracts for stormwater management and for a green belt. The preliminary flat was submitted, was submitted on May eighth and it was updated on July nineteen to address some of the concerns that were brought up in the hearing examiner's public hearing. Here is a copy of the plan that was submitted to the department for review. This is the north half of the plat. And then on this slide, we have the south half of the plat. Agency and public comments. The file was routed to the agencies on July seventh and May fifteenth. Um, additionally, we reached out to Idaho Transportation Department on August twenty-eighth as directed by the zoning commission in their hearing. And these were the agencies that were notified of the request. We received comments from several agencies, both for the hearing examiner's hearing and the zoning commission's hearing. Prior to this board's hearing, we received updated, updated comments from Idaho Transportation Department and City of Cootney. We received several public, uh, public comments on the project and, uh, the themes that are brought up in those comments are as follows. Destruction of wetlands could adversely impact drainage of homes, housing developments around the site. Wetlands on the subject property currently serve as drainage for Seven Sisters Development. Diminished quality of life for homes built in Seven Sisters Development, especially those bordering the wetlands. Removal of trees from site does not address housing shortage. Devalue Seven Sisters Development. Development has no feasible areas for snow removal. Increase in traffic and accidents. Current road infrastructure not designed, uh, for a development of this size and magnitude. Cootney Elementary School at capacity, no educational support to house children requiring education. Cootney Sewer at capacity, development will put a stress on the already burdened system. Concerns regarding proposed, uh, drainage system being able to handle runoff without impacting the residents on the west side of Providence. Property within wetlands and flood plains. Concerns about the file being heard by the hearing examiner and not the zoning commission. The development should follow City of Cootney's planning regulations. Changes to water wells along Providence Road. Added infrastructure cost for law enforcement. Schools, access roads, water and sewer. Destruction of noise buffer and wildlife habitat. Incomplete stormwater management study. Traffic study does not address impact on nearby Highway two hundred Cootney Bay Seven Sisters intersection. U.S. Army Corps of Engineers lost jurisdiction over wetlands. As we can see on this map, the site shares the boundary with City of Cootney, that area that's shown in the brown, that's City of Cootney and the project borders City of Cootney. It is also located within ACI of the city. The site does have direct access and frontage on Providence Road, which is a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. The property is currently vacant. It is unplatted. It is approximately thirty-nine point five seven acres. It is zone suburban and has a land use designation of urban. There are minimal steep slopes present on the property, over thirty percent grade. Um, site contains mapped wetlands. It does not contain any mapped water bodies. It contains soils that are classified as prime farmland if drained with a drainage classification of poorly drained or somewhat poorly drained. Parcel is located within flood hazard zone X and it is not located within the floodway. There are no local state or federal agencies that identified any critical wildlife habitats on or within the vicinity of the subject property. These are the standards of review or the applicable laws from the Bonner County Revised Code against which the project was reviewed. Again, the project is requesting hundred and sixteen residential lots with a minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet or more on a suburban zone property in Bonner County. Existing or proposed services to the project will be provided from City of Sandpoint for Water, Cootney Pondre Sewer District for Sewer, Avista Utilities for Par, uh, Northside Fire District for Fire Protection, Lake Pondre School District eighty-four for the school district and Bonner County Abilene's District as well as Pondre Hospital District. As noted before, the site is located within this area of City of Impact of City of Cootney. And we have already discussed the project intent, which is to create hundred and sixteen residential lots along with some utility tracts for stormwater management and a green belt. The property is zone suburban and it has a land use designation of urban. According to the Bonner County Revised Code, the minimum required lot size for suburban zone properties is ten thousand square feet where all urban services are available. We'll discuss the services in a little more detail now. The project is proposed to be served by City of Sandpoint for Water Services. Uh, we did receive a letter from the City of Sandpoint that was titled of will serve confirmation. The letter states, upon approval of engineered plans, proof of a valid building and plumbing permit, payment of applicable fees and completion of approved water infrastructure improvements service will be provided. In addition to that, a letter was received from Idaho Department of Water Resources on July twenty-four, twenty twenty-three. The letter states that the project will be served by the City of Sandpoint uh, for water services and we have no concerns about the project. The project is proposed to be served by Cootney Pondre Sewer District for Sewer Services. A letter was received, a will serve letter was received from the district on June twenty-three, twenty twenty-three. The letter states, after all requirements of the district have been met, including but not limited to the payment of all fees, completion of a sewer main extension agreement um, to the district satisfaction, applications for service as well as submittal of sewer utility plans, the district will provide service to the property. Um, talking about roads and access and Bonner County-owned public roads, either existing or proposed. The site does have direct access and frontage on Providence Road, which is a Bonner County-owned and maintained public right-of-way. Bonner County Road and Bridge Department reviewed the project on July thirteen, twenty twenty-three and provided comments relating to a need for a left turn on Highway two hundred encroachment permits for driveways, upgrading of roads, um, importance of sixty feet utility ingress, ingress easement, fire hydrants, uh, where there's no location poles to be marked on the flats. And the upgrading of roads according to the Bonner County Revised Code standards. For discussions regarding improvements to state highway two hundred, the Idaho Transportation Department has reviewed the project and they reviewed the traffic impact study as well. The agency responded with the following comments on July ten, twenty twenty-three prior to the zoning commission's hearing. Applicant will need to apply to make upgrades to state highway two hundred with ITD. Please include the approach plans for state highway two hundred and the warranted left turn lane in the ta- traffic impact study, including striping plans and tapers. Also in application, please include the, uh, traffic impact study and trip generation report. And they gave a link where the applicant can apply. The zoning commission on their hearing, in their hearing on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three directed the planning staff to reach out to the Idaho Transportation Department and solicit further comments, comments from the agency. So the department reached out to the agency on August twenty-eighth and received the following comment on August thirty-first. At this time, based on the information that the department has and after a review of the committee, from the committee, ITD is going to require illumination and left and right turn lanes for Providence Road. For fire safety, the project is going to be served by City of Sandpoint. Uh, water system complete with fire hydrants capable of delivering fire flows as prescribed in the International Fire Code. The project proposes the following emergency access, access easements connecting to City of Cootney in case of emergencies. There is a sixty feet wide emergency access that is proposed, um, across lot sixteen of block four and there is a twenty-five feet wide public utility easement and fire access easement that is proposed along, uh, across lot eleven of block four. And they can be seen here. So this is a twenty-five feet utility easement access fire easement that is, uh, accessing Chuala Loop. And here's the other easement that has been proposed. The updated plat was sent to Northside Fire District for their review and they replied with the following comment on August first. We are satisfied with the additional fire access easement entering the subdivision off of Seven Sisters Drive. This is depicted on the plat map as note seventeen, a twenty-five feet wide public utility easement and fire access easement. If the access is not approved by City of Cootney, we will require another emergency access easement to be established. In the latest information that I have, the city has approved the fire access, um, to the, through this, to Chuala Loop, connecting the Chuala Loop to the, to the subdivision. But I'm, I suppose the applicant can speak more to it, um, during their time. In the latest letter that was received from City of Cootney on September twenty, twenty twenty-three, the city stated that they have received an application for a utility encroachment and culvert permit from the applicant and the application will be reviewed. It seems that it has been approved. The letter further requests that the emergency access be gated only to allow pedestrian flow of traffic when not in use for emergencies to provide a language on the plat stating the same and to have the gates installed at the access to Chuala Loop and Seven Sisters Drive for blocking physical access to the city streets except during emergencies. The Bonner County Road and Bridge Department in their letter dated July thirteen, twenty twenty-three stated that if that emergency access to City of Cootney is not established, then the applicant be required to connect, to provide an alternate, uh, access through Firestone Lane. But it seems they have gotten their permit from City of Cootney. So perhaps this would not be required. The request for project review was sent to Lake Pondre School District eighty-four and Lake Pondre School District eighty-four Transportation Department, both on May fifteenth and July seventh. No written comments were received from the school districts regarding, school district regarding um, outlining specific impacts to the delivery of services with suggested mitigation measures in response to the project review request. The district did provide a neutral testimony at the hearing examiner's hearing on July five, twenty twenty-three, recognizing that in Idaho, school construction and growth are primarily the responsibility of the local taxpayers to fund school growth and improvements. The testimony presented did not outline any specific impacts on the school district, particular to this project and the district did not propose any mitigation measures needed in the testimony presented. I have included that testimony, um, on the slide. It is also available in your staff report. City of Cootney in their letter dated September twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-three stated, the county has the authority to require sidewalks and pathways for the entire subdivision due to the average lot size per Bonner County Revised Code Section twelve dash six twenty-five A three. Currently, the preliminary plat application does not provide for separated connected pathway system. The city further disagrees with the county's interpretation of its code. However, irrespective of the interpretation of the code, the project does propose connecting residential lots in the subdivision through a five feet wide pathway along internal roads in the subdivision. The fact was presented to the zoning commission in their hearing on August seventeenth. This is supported by the findings of fact and the conditions of approval that the zoning commission's recommendation letter stated that was sent to the board, um, dated August twenty-fourth. The suggested conditions of approval to the Board of County Commissioners continue requiring the development of proposed five foot with five feet wide pathway as part of the infrastructure development. Bonner County Revised, Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash six twenty-five B states, public access easements or the conveyance of land for public access, parks or facilities may be required for subdivisions that are contiguous to public lands, public streams, lakes, ponds, wetlands or similar areas. For areas designated in a county facilities acquisition plan, if so required, the property owner shall be paired bear market value for the easement or land or may qualify for a density bonus as part of a conservation subdivision. The requirements of section are not applicable to this project for the following reasons. Uh, the subdivision is not contiguous to any public lands. It is not contiguous to any public streams, lakes or ponds as identified in the National Wetlands Inventory Maps. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction over the wetlands on the property are waters of the United States is awaited. Bonner County does not have a county facilities acquisition plan designating any areas within the subject property for county acquisition. Since the project does not meet any of the three conditions above at this time, the conveyance of public land parks or facilities may not be required for the subdivision. I apologize. This is not the correct slide. So the discussion about curbs and gutters is included in your staff report. The City of Cootney requires that curbs and gutters be required for, for this development, um, according to the, according to B C R C twelve dash six twenty-four D. The applicant is required to provide, is, is required to provide internal roads that are, uh, brought up through the standards of the Bonner County Revised Code Title II, which does include requirements for curbs and gutters if needed. So as the applicants provide new roads to the subdivision, they will be taking care of curbs and gutters requirement with that. Some discussion about stormwater management erosion control or environmental protection procedures. The applicant submitted a stormwater management erosion control plan. This plan showed two maps. One of them is the stormwater management is, is the existing conditions basin map, which basically shows how the water flows right now. And the second exhibit is that of a stormwater management erosion control plan that shows the developed basin map which shows water flowing from the, uh, from the, from the boundary of the project towards the internal roads. All the way taking it to Providence and then flowing it out. Some discussion about wetlands. According to the, according, um, according to B C R C twelve, seven thirty-one, a wetland reconnaissance by a design professional accepted or authorized by the U.S. Army Corps of, Corps of Engineers is required to determine whether wetland boundaries for all subdivisions containing map wetlands as determined from U.S. Fish and Wildlife, uh, national wetland inventory maps. And according to seven thirty-two, a professional wetland delineation is required that is based on the wetland reconnaissance. So as discussed previously, the wetland study has been sent to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for their, for their jurisdiction and that jurisdiction is awaited in light of the recent Supreme Court case on wetlands. According to the National Wetland Inventory Maps, the site may contain these potential wet, wetlands that are shown in green and yellow on the site here. According to the Bonner County Revised Code, a wetland delineation study was submitted as part of the project. The study was prepared by Kegel Environment, um, LLC, which are, they are wetlands, wildlife and permitting specialist in the states, in the state of Idaho. The report has been submitted to U.S. Car, Army Corps of Engineers for an approved jurisdictional determination, the results of which are awaited. The executive summary of the report states that the focus of the report is the identification and delineation of waters of the U.S. The agency performed the wetland delineation in accordance with the nineteen eighty-seven Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual. The agency excavated a sample site, site soil pits extraordinarily deep to uncover any water table within a reasonable depth that might be indicative of a dry season. K E requests that this small wetland we found not non-jurisdiction added as, um, it does not connect to any water bodies of the United States. There was also no evidence that the delineated wetland would have a significant effect on the physical, chemical and biological integrity of the nearest navigable water. This parcel is located flood hazard, is located within flood hazard zone X, which are the areas of minimal flood hazard that are, that are over the elevation of point two percent annual flood chance. A summary of the findings of facts. There are several findings of facts, um, in the staff report. We will go over only a few of those that have not been mentioned in the previous discussion of this project. As noted before, the site is located within Lake Pondre School District eighty-four. We received a testimony from the school district at the hearing examiner's hearing. It was a neutral testimony um, that stated that school construction and growth are primarily the responsibility of the local taxpayers to fund school growth and improvements. The testimony presented did not outline any specific impacts on the school district from this project, nor did the testimony propose any mitigation measures. And irrespective of the interpretation of the code by either City of Cootney or Bonner County, the project proposes connecting the residential lots in the subdivision through a five feet wide pathway along the internal roads in the subdivision. And it was presented to the zoning commission as well, as well as included in their recommendation letter to the board. Staff request that, uh, point thirty-one of findings of fact be modified as shown on the screen here, point thirty-one and thirty-two. Bonner County Revised Code allows submission of optional preliminary grading stormwater management and erosion control plan that may be submitted at the time of application for preliminary plaits and that is what the application applicant did. The preliminary stormwater management plan was considered by the governing body, both at the hearing examiner and the zoning commission's hearing and is now being considered by the Board of County Commissioners in today's hearing. The code allows that once the preliminary stormwater management plan has been, uh, reviewed in the hearings, the applicant can provide a final grading stormwater management plan. The applicant can provide a final grading stormwater management plan that meets the applicable requirements. Of the subchapter after the hearing has after the preliminary plan has been considered at the hearing. Points thirty five and thirty six. Oh, we have already gone over this that uh a wet a delineation study was provided by the applicant to the Army Corps of Engineers. And in light of the recent um. Supreme Court case, the results of the approved jurisdictional determination are awaited from U S Army Corps of Engineers. Both of these points thirty seven and thirty eight, they note that U S Army Corps of Engineers and Environmental Protection Agencies still have jurisdiction over wetlands. Over federal wetlands. Um and that is just something we wanted to note because of a public comment that was received that U S Army Corps of Engineers has lost jurisdiction over wetlands. Bonner County and City of Cootney, they entered into a A C I agreement on November tenth nineteen ninety four. The ordinance defines the purpose of the A C I impact. Specifies the factors considered in identifying A C I. Identify zoning and subdivision ordinances that shall apply within the unincorporated portions of Bonner County. Line within the A C I. Provides for review and common procedures between jurisdictions, providing for administrative jurisdiction within the A C I. Establishes an effective date pursuant to section sixty seven sixty five uh twenty six Idaho code. Section five of this A C I agreement. States the zoning and subdivision ordinances and subsequent amendments thereto as officially adopted by Bonner County Idaho. Shall apply to the unincorporated portion of Bonner County within the uh Bonner County Idaho line within Cootney A C I. The states, this means that. For this particular subdivision, we are not able to apply City of Cootney's subdivision ordinances because the A C I agreement agreement within with what with. The city of Cootney doesn't allow Bonner County to do that. B C R C twelve dash six zero zero B, the subdivision regulations state. That they have been designed to comply with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. This project has been reviewed against all applicable standards of the Bonner County Revised Code subdivision regulations. To ensure that the project is compliant with the comprehensive plan as well, subject to the conditions of approval. I will quickly summarize the conditions of approval uh that were included in your staff report for your review. There is discussion about lot sizes and services, which basically means if the applicant is not able to provide water and sewer system prior to the final plat submission. The plat should change, which means it should increase the lot sizes, reduce the number of lots. To meet the standards of Bonner County Revised Code. Easements and constrain constraints shall be shown on the plat according to the Bonner County Revised Code. Fire protection. The applicant is required to provide emergency ingress egress either through City of Cootney, either by connecting to City of Cootney or through Firestone Lane. The improvements for fire fire protection shall be shall be made prior to the final plat approval. There are conditions regarding road naming and road improvements according to the Bonner County Revised Code again, the roads. Within the subdivision and Providence Road will have to be improved prior to the final plat submission. State highway improvements according to the comment that was received from Idaho Transportation Department, their latest comment. The staff suggests that this condition of approval be added to the um to the board's approval if the board does decide to approve the project today. The applicant shall provide a letter from Idaho Transportation Department stating that the required upgrades to state highway two hundred as noted in the agency's comments above. Have been completed or that the improvements have been bonded for with I T D or other relevant agencies prior to the recording of the final plat. The applicant shall further comply with any modifications of these conditions as required by the Idaho Transportation Department upon further review of the project. Or based on the site conditions or other other practical considerations during the construction of these improvements. Condition of approval number six notes several improvements that the applicant is required to make prior to the final plat submission. And after the preliminary plat approval, if the board again does decide to apply uh approve the project today. Those are general improvements. Road improvements, fire protection improvements, water systems, sewer systems, stormwater management and erosion control and sidewalk improvements. The applicant cannot start start improvements on site unless the improvement plans have been approved by Bonner County. Once the approval from Bonner County has been received, the applicant does have the option to bond for the improvements prior to the final plat submission. Or or with the final plat submission. The validity of filming plat is for two years, the applicant can request an extension if needed. Then there are there is a condition requiring final plat submission which which shall be in accordance with the Bonner County Revised Code. And according to the Bonner County Revised Code, the wetland delineation study was prepared by the agency Kegel Environment. Um and submitted to the U S Army Corps of Engineers requesting a jurisdictional determination. The conditions associated with that are these, if the wetlands as delineated by the wetland specialist. Are found to be jurisdictional by U S Army Corps of Engineers. All future buildings shall maintain a twenty feet setback to the delineated wetlands in accordance with B B C R C twelve seven three three. Unless other permits such as section four oh four permits are obtained from U S Army Corps of Engineers, Environmental Protection Agency or any other agency regu- regulating jurisdictional wetlands in Bonner County. If the agency determines delineated wetlands to if the agency determines the delineated wetlands to be non-jurisdictional. Then the plat may be modified to reflect the decision in accordance with B C R C twelve dash seven three two. Allowing the plat to show wetland delineation based on the wetland reconnaissance. By a design professional that has been accepted or authorized by U S Army Corps of Engineers. The Bonner County Hearing Examiner recommended that the zoning commission conduct a hearing um for this for this project. Based on the extent of the public comment and other contested factors in this case. Following that, the zoning commission um recommended approval of the project on August seventeenth twenty twenty three in their public hearing. The recommendation was based on approval of the 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 recommendation for approval was subject to the conditions of approval that were. Included in the recommendation letter that this board received from the zoning commission. And the vote was three to one. And I can take any questions at this time.
I just want to clarify for the record that one of the things that you're commenting uh is that there needs to be a wetland delineation. And although there has been a report, there has been no uh actual delineation pending the resolution of litigation.
No, the delineation has actually been done. We are waiting for the U S Army Corps of Engineers to say whether the wetlands are jurisdictional or not, or whether they are waters of the United States or not.
So that you can determine what the setback would be, right? And so that has not been completed yet because of ongoing litigation.
We are we are waiting for the for the decision from U S Army Corps of Engineers.
I have a similar question and that is, well, one. For the public and then for the board, what is the only impact is setbacks and then to determine what the develop developer if if it is approved. Can do in those spots and then this is in regards uniquely enough a Supreme Court case that was brought from Bonner County. And Sackett. And do we have any visibility on timelines?
I believe the applicant may be able to speak speak better to that.
Okay, I will ask when it is their turn. Uh going back to. The findings of fact. Number forty two, so. Per Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash six hundred B. Am I to understand correctly then because of existing ordinance? The manner which with the board should be considering this subdivision is in regards to. Bonner County's ordinance and not the city of Cootney's proposed subdivision.
I think what you mean would be then the these findings of facts thirty nine.
Forty one thirty nine through forty one.
Right, right, that is correct. So the Bonner County doesn't have the ability to use city of city of Cootney's subdivision regulations for this project. Because of the A C I agreement that was signed between between Bonner County and City of Cootney. The the that agreement clearly states that it's Bonner County subdivision ordinances that will be applied to the to the A C I areas in Cootney.
So a near thirty year old duck.
Hasn't been updated since.
That is the duck.
Yep.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Commissioner Williams, any other questions for staff? Commissioner Bradshaw, do you have any questions for staff before we turn it over to the applicant? I'm going once. I'm gonna take his silence so he doesn't have a question and I'm gonna turn it over to the applicant. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Hammett, I'm representing. Hi, my name is Mike Hammett, I'm representing the Providence Road LLC subdivision. I want to thank the commissioners and the staff for their time today. You know, there was there was a few things that were left here um little little open from from our last meeting. We have received an approved um permit from the city of Cootney to tie in for a fire road. So that should address those concerns, it's what Northside Fire required, um we have met that now.
Can I, are you referencing, there was a document here that says we're satisfied with the additional fire access easement entering the subdivision. Off of the Seven Sisters Drive, is that what you're referencing?
So, well, it's it's that, but there's also a permit issued by the city of Cootney. To tie to tie that. Easement in.
I saw some people who were shaking their head, yes, that's what you're referencing, is that that's post you submitting this.
Yes.
Okay. They did put it in the file there to show that you accomplished that part.
That's the sixty foot one to the north versus Chewa Loop?
No, that's the Chewa Loop.
Okay, thank you.
So the the wetlands, there has been a delineation done, um there is um. An unknown time period, they're still writing procedure. They reached out, um asked if they could come do a site visit and who the point person would be. We responded back that I would be that point person, um I met them on site, we're not. We don't know what the outcome of all this is going to be, is that going to be jurisdictional, is it not? Um we could have told them at this point, we don't want a site visit, let's wait till we see what happens, we have nothing to hide there. We did a site visit that was um last week. We've not heard back from them on that yet, I assume that's going to take some time for them getting that all put together considering what all. Is happening right now with wetlands, um but they have done a site visit, they took a bunch of pictures, walked around, took dirt, looked at plants. Had full access to the whole site. They had some questions, I answered every question I could to the best of my ability. They left there and we'll see what happens with that. Some of these things, that's why they're left as a condition, right? We are trying to meet everything from Bonner County ordinance. Everything we can do, we are trying to do ahead of time. Some of the engineering, some of the plans are never done until later in a project. Um their conditions of approval for final plat, holding that final plat is part of what is done to make sure that we. Fully do everything we are supposed to execute, the conditions, the code, the engineering. Our our engineers are working with their engineers, we have um Dan and Matt here from H M H Engineering. I know, um I'm gonna want them to come up here because some of the questions you guys have. Well, maybe more engineering type questions, so um. City of Sam Point to Water, they they have full capacity for every home in there, they have fire flows. Cootney Pondre Sewer District has more capacities than what we're asking for, they have additional capacity still available on top of that. So, you know, they they put a letter in there. All all all's all's we're here to do is, I mean, the subdivision next to us at one point with a field with wetlands in it. They removed, they built other wetlands in another area to take care of that, this was all designed at one point to tie in. But we are doing it in the county, we are here to meet all county ordinances, work with the the state, the I T D. The county reached back out to I T D and asked if they had any more input. Their input was to put up some lighting so that people could see that intersection better. It's up to them to decide, we we're willing to do anything they want done. So I, you know, I don't I don't know what else we can do other than than follow every one of these ordinances codes, when you guys place conditions on us. We have to follow those conditions or we don't get final plat, we don't get final plat, we spent all this time and money. For nothing, our our intent is fully to to comply with all of this, so. At this point, I'd like these guys to come up here in case you have questions for them.
Good afternoon, Dan Tadic with H M H Engineering. Uh thank you staff for a very thorough presentation, I was just gonna touch on a few things, I think Mike touched on a few of these as well. Um subdivision was laid out per Bonner County Code. All lots exceed the Bonner County minimum of ten thousand square feet, in fact, our smallest lots are ten thousand six hundred fifty square feet. Uh Mike spoke to the wetlands and the uh site visit just this past week. We don't know when we're gonna hear back from the corps specifically on that jurisdictional determination. We're optimistic that we will hear back soon based on their willingness to show up. However, we can't guarantee that, um but for now, our plans are indicating uh to not disturb the wetlands area. Until a determination is made or a core permit is received. All the subdivision roads have been designed to meet Bonner County Road and Bridge standards for publicly owned privately maintained roads. Uh this does include the five foot additional width for pedestrian bike lane on all the internal roads as presented in the staff report. In addition, Providence Road will be regraded, widened and paved from two hundred along the entire development frontage. Uh Mike spoke to this as well, uh we have applied for and received a permit from the city of Cootney for the right of way encroachment for the Colbert installation. To allow for construction of that fire apparatus access road. Uh this will also provide a pedestrian access route between the two subdivisions. The traffic impact study was prepared in accordance with Bonner County Road and Bridge requirements. Uh that report was submitted to both Bonner County and I T D. Based on the traffic projections, a dedicated left turn lane into the subdivision is warranted. We take no issue with that and fully intend to design and construct the improvements in accordance with I T D requirements. The stormwater improvements were designed in accordance with Bonner County Code, all stormwater currently flows north to the existing draw. Along the northern property boundary or just ponds along Providence Road, which basically a dam for the current drainage patterns. We have designed the roadway ditches to carry stormwater to dedicated swales and tracks. Which provide treatment and storage prior to discharge into that draw. Uh in addition, our design includes improved ditching along Providence Road. Uh we've nearly completed the final grading and stormwater plans and anticipate. Uh, we've nearly completed the final grading and stormwater plans and anticipate submitting to Bonner County within the week. The water system was modeled by the city's sandpoint's chosen consultant and will serve, and a will serve letter was provided. Their analysis indicates that the system will meet state requirements for max day demand plus fire flow conditions. The design includes a, a new twelve-inch main looped from Highway two hundred to Seven Sisters Drive. With eight-inch mains branching off of that. Engineered plans are currently with that jurisdiction for review. A sewer main extension agreement has been executed between the owner and Kootenay Pondre Sewer District. They have no concerns with capacity or ability to serve. The design includes gravity sewer, including a bore across two hundred to get to the existing main on the other side of two hundred. And engineered plans are also with that jurisdiction currently for review. Uh, we feel our project meets Bonner County requirements, not asking for any sort of variance or special consideration. And with that, we're happy to answer any questions. Commissioners may have.
You have a comment in regards to the concerns brought up about, well, snow storage?
Is that gonna be in the similar area of the swales?
Yes, exactly, this is a Bonner County standard road section that we're providing.
There's a long list of items that. Have been put forth that have a need for a response on this project. So when I look at the city of Kootenay, are you guys going to, one of the concerns from public is, are you going to annex into the city? And then in their report. The city actually gave a number of. Questions. Regarding the project, uh, but they've started off with the city is open to the annexation of the proposed lots. If the annexation were to occur prior to any develop on the site so that the subdivision is designed and built to city standards. Are you guys going? Is, do you have a response to that request from that, that write-out?
You know, at, at this time, we are not gonna annex into the city. We intend fully to follow all Bonner County codes.
Okay.
Any, any state, any federal.
Okay. Did you guys look at the Kootenay, the city of Kootenay's letter at all?
Yeah.
Okay, so when they gave all of their points in that letter, did you guys have items that you were interested in agreeing to? Or is it just, you guys wanted to stick with looking at what you can get from Bonner County and not addressing the city? Cause I don't wanna go line by line, cause they actually wrote, theirs is a three-page letter.
Yeah, um, you know, before this even started, I asked for meeting with, on that with the city of Kootenay. We, we discussed this project and, um. There's, there's, there's a few reasons that it's not.
No worries.
Necessary to get it.
Okay.
We, we intend to follow every Bonner County code. The project we have put in place actually goes above and beyond. The minimum standard.
Okay. So another point.
Mr. Bradshaw out in the. Oh, in the Texas.
So their number three, um, bullet point, he said, no application or discussion of the fire access on the Seven Sisters Drive. Has occurred to date with the city of Kootenay, has that? Is there a reason? Didn't occur, or is it just simply?
Letter, uh, that's, that's the permit that we've received.
August ninth, okay. So some of these have been changed. Okay.
I'm sorry. What is that? Oh, thank you.
Okay, I think I understand you, we're just sticking county, you're not interested in the Kootenay. I don't have any further questions for the applicant then.
Commissioner Bradshaw, do you have any questions for the applicant? After we just got done meeting him. Well, just wanna make. I wanna make sure that Commissioner Bradshaw has the opportunity. And if he has none. Been hearing them. I have no further questions for the applicant. Go ahead, Mr. Bradshaw.
Yeah, I have no question.
Thank you, Commissioner. Alright.
Okay.
Thank you. So before. Before we get into, like I said, at one hour, before we get into the public testimony, I am going to. It's two twenty-six. And we will take a recess for five minutes. Alright, it is two thirty-two. On Monday, the second of October, and we are returning out of recess. Back to file S zero 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 two dash two-three, the Providence subdivision. And we are about to enter into. The phase of this hearing. With the public hearing. The procedure will be as so, it will be in-person first followed by online, it will be. In support. Followed by those that are neutral, which rarely exists. And followed by those. That are opposed, the rules of testimony will be as such, please approach the microphone. State your name for the record. Public testimony is limited to three minutes per person. You may give your three minutes to another person. So they have up to six minutes to speak, no one will be allowed to speak for more than six minutes. Public comments are limited to the specifics of this application, which is the Providence subdivision. If you agree with another speaker. Please just acknowledge agreement, there is no need. To repeat that information. At this time, is there anyone that is in the room that is in support that would like to testify?
My name is Jeremy Dunn, actually live in the county, and I also work in the real estate industry. And we do not have enough housing for the amount of people they're trying to marry, so I'm in support of this.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone, is there anyone online who would like to testify in support of this? File?
Nobody with their hand raised.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who would like to testify that is neutral to this file?
Testable for the record representation for the city of Kootenay, um, I gave a copy of this already for the exhibits. Commissioner Bradshaw would be here.
It's just a copy of the section of your county code in regards to pathways and sidewalks. Um, and we were wondering too. You were reading, what was our August letter from the city, we wanted to know if our September twentieth. Letter was given to you. Um, cause it just does have some updated comments in there in regards to that encroachment. Uh, and looking at the conditions that planning staff has given since the last hearing, it looks like pretty much all of our. Concerns for the city have been addressed, the only thing is the pathways slash like sidewalks. Uh, that five-foot area, it's like a bike path roads shoulder. And what the city was looking for is actually an actual pathway. For pedestrians, something like what Seven Sisters have, it's like an asphalt sidewalk. So that's what we're really looking for. And then the only other thing is, because we haven't seen if it's been updated or not, is the actual certificate for the A C I for the city. It noted approval of this, and the city wants that wording removed, that's not the standard language for A C I certificates. Uh, so those are really just the only two things that we have.
Can I ask you though, on your nine twenty-one, it still says the city is open to the annexation, still has that on?
We are, yes, so the city is, uh, but the city wants to note that they are only open to the annexation prior to the development occurring. So like any of the improvements. Because obviously, if you're gonna annex into the city, you want. It to beat a city standard, so street trees, what their sidewalk requirements are, pathways, parks, things like that, so. Before any building or improvements occurred, we would want it to be annexed and then. Um, we also have different setbacks and building regulations, so that's the other reasoning.
And so the city requested that the emergency access be gated in a manner to allow pedestrian traffic, is that, that's all on your new one still?
Yes.
And so there was no agreement to do that.
So in the conditions, at least for our note, it looks like it's on there, and if it doesn't cover the gated actual access. The city would request that as a condition, just like additional sidewalk or pathways. Uh, cause we aren't just wanting vehicle traffic to be coming in out of there and impacting Seven Sisters, which I'm sure you'll hear from residents from Seven Sisters, how much they are concerned about that. Uh, I believe there's a special gate. That can be broken open at the time of emergency that was talked about, I believe at the hearing examiner's, um, meeting. And we're fine with that, we just want some type of a blockade to keep general traffic, but do allow the pedestrian traffic, cause we know kids are gonna be. Coming in and out of there, and we wanna save pathway for them. And that's the other reason why we want that additional actual pathway to the bike lane slash roads shoulder. Yes, we would like that as a condition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody online that is neutral to this project that would like to comment? Thank you. Is there anyone in the room who was opposed that would like to comment? So if we could start from either the front, I'll start from the front. Towards the rear, upstate, you have the record, you have three minutes, which there is a. Timer behind me to my right, to my left. And, uh. Please be civil and keep your comments to the file on hand. And ma'am.
So my name is Leslie Holbert, and we live at the end of Providence. Well, actually, the very end of the road. Um, my concern again, which I've said over and over again. If you are out in that area. Getting onto that highway in the winter with all that traffic. They say that, you know, oh, they're meeting all these codes, it's ten thousand square foot. That's fine. That's. They've met that on paper, but does that necessarily mean that it should happen? We're not opposed to growth, we know growth is gonna happen. It happens everywhere, we're just. Opposed to a hundred and sixteen homes on Providence Road. Um, if you haven't had the opportunity to go to Providence and try to get out. In the morning when people are going to work or school. I would highly encourage that to happen. That's number one, number two. The taxes, how is that fair? You know that developers are making money, that's why they develop. Why and how is it fair that the taxpayers have to handle the additional expense of schools? If there's only five spots left at Kootenay School. But yet they're not responsible to help with that, the taxpayers are, how is that fair? It's not. Okay. Um, and then the fire department. So if there is a gate. And they're coming from Northside. And. There's a fire. So you've got a hundred and sixteen homes, which means. At least a hundred and sixteen cars trying to get out, right? How's that gonna work, are they gonna have a key and then they have to come from Northside with the key to open the? The escape gate or whatever for, you know, emergency, how's that gonna work? And then my only other question was, on the lots that. They have designated for fire, are they building on those lots? Or are they just designated for? Those are just my question, but. It really isn't that ideal with a hundred and sixteen homes, I just hope you guys really get it. I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Larry Hoffman. I live in Seven Sisters.
And I wasn't going to talk today, but there's a few things that Mr. Hammack mentioned that they got the will serve letter from the sewer district, and they have plenty of flow, I guess, for the, for the sewer. The sewer district received a letter from the Idaho DEQ saying they have a declining capacity. Now, that should have been included in your rule serve letter. I hope you, you receive that. What that means is when you were at the meeting, I think when I talked last time, at the last meeting, and the, the sewer district has to improve their capacity, both quality and amount to meet the DEQ standards. And that means, again, more taxes, like we're talking about the schools. Now we're going to have more taxes to increase this sewer capacity. And that would leave then the developer out, because they don't have to pay anything. So it goes on our backs and nobody else's back. So that'll be coming up in, you know, they did receive, the sewer district received a grant, that's fine. But the grant's not going to pay for everything. We are. I, I wanted to tell you that, and that's all I got to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Absolutely.
My name is Emma, and I live on Kildare, which is a road off of Providence Road. And I just had a couple of smaller comments, some of them I've already made to the zoning commissioners, zoning and planning meeting that happened about a month ago. And I guess the developers here today, they had made a couple of comments saying that they were here and they were really working with the county and the different groups and all involved, but I didn't hear them say that they were working with people who lived on Providence Road or the residents already there or in Seven Sisters, and that's disappointing. We've all kind of moved out there and we're here for a reason, and I, I get it. There unfortunately is not enough housing for the people who currently live here, and that is probably something that they're trying to help, but it doesn't look like it's much of a help, especially when it's a hundred and sixteen homes on less than forty acres. When I kind of mentioned that to people around, they're like, are you serious? Because it just, it doesn't seem logical. And when you look at just the plat itself, and I mean, it is just you know, space after space after space, and I kind of have to chuckle at myself when they, they come up there and they're like, we've exceeded your ten thousand. There's not a lot that's like less than ten thousand six hundred square feet. It's like, okay. And I don't mean anything by it, but it's like they've kind of done just enough to get the approval and and I don't know, I just look at it, and I appreciate the fact that the city of Kootenay here is working and they're really in support of Seven Sisters and what they want and their safety, but we're coming to you because we don't have a city. You guys are our representatives. And so there's a bunch of people that are concerned. And it may not be a hundred and sixteen homes that are concerned, but you know, our sixteen to eighteen homes with the people that have been living there. We should, our voices should be heard too and considered, and I hope that you take that away. Again, progress is going to happen and we don't deny it, but can it be a progress that is logical and makes sense and it's good for the surrounding areas? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Grace Bauer for the record, and I am a resident in the city of Kootenay. Before I dive into the application, I would just want to bring up a possible conflict of interest. And would like to respectfully ask Commissioner Bradshaw to accuse himself of this vote. The applicant's attorney Mauricio Cordona donated five hundred and forty dollars to his campaign. And as the commissioner had mentioned, the applicant, he's known for, I couldn't hear if it was over twenty-four, thirty-four years, but that seems to be a conflict of interest to me. The other thing is, back when the applicant came to the city of Kootenay, I was serving as I was sitting, serving on the city council, and he basically said if we come through the city, we'll build less lots, but if we go through the county, we're going to build more. And they're more likely to rubber stamp it. And he basically said he's going to choose the path of least resistance, and he has delivered on that. The, this is an appropriate place for expansion and growth as it is in the area city impact and is adjacent to the Seven Sisters neighborhood. But it should go through the city process and meet city codes. And I, I think there would be a lot more support for this project if there were probably like fifty houses and this was annexed in for safety reasons, for, for children. And also to look at the impact of schools. I mean, there's apparently only five spots left at the Kootenay Elementary. Are the realtors going to tell the new home buyers that they're going to have to have their children bust off to Hope Elementary, possibly? There, the, the people at Ponder Point will, are already having difficulty getting out on their side of the road, and I don't think this is in the best interest of their safety until there's a traffic light placed there. Let's see. Yeah, I, I think there's going to be the, the wetlands issue. We have lots of standing water and backup. Our, our HOA president showed us video from a few years ago where standing water was just sitting there. And the engineers who support the applicant, it said they were going to just fill in the wetlands, and the city of Kootenay required the Seven Sisters developer to create wetland spaces, and I just don't see that that's going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Do this every time. Unfortunately, I wanted to show you guys some pictures, and I previously submitted those, so I don't know if somebody wants to go and then pull up pictures, and then I can jump back in, just so we're not wasting time.
They're in our file. They were submitted, so I've seen them, but I
It, it kind of helps because I can, I need to word picture some of them, if you don't mind, but if you want, you can call on somebody else, and then I can come back up when it's up.
In the interest of the public, could you pull them up, Swatty? Thank you. And your name for the record.
My name is Ashley Gerstenberger.
Towards the bottom. There we go. If you want to pause right here, and then I'll, I'll ask you to scroll as we go along. Can I get that timer up, please, just so I can? We're going. Okay, so my name is Ashley Gerstenberger, and I live in the Seven Sisters Development. I actually live at three zero five Chuy Loop. That's my backyard. So there's literally the fence that's bordering my property, and then this is just right beyond it. It's a beautiful wetland area. This area in particular is the area that was picked up by the wetland surveyors as potentially jurisdictional wetland. And I can tell you that this place is an absolute lake. It's not that it's got some marshy areas, or sometimes it's a little bit wet. One of these trenches right here is actually one of the trenches that was dug by the wetland surveyors, which was full of water into June, and then you can see this other field picture here. It's just standing water everywhere. So somebody had made a previous comment today in this meeting that the Seven Sisters Development used to be a field, and it used to be an area that had wetland as well, and that was moved. That's it. So if we destroy this wetland, the last part of it, if we fill it in, that water has to go somewhere. And there's nothing in the current wetland surveying map of how water actually goes. It actually depicts what happens here, and I know that because it's my backyard, and I literally stare into it all year long. And so the residents of Seven Sisters and the surrounding areas were really worried about water pressure. We're worried about septic. Quite a few of us in Seven Sisters have replaced the flooring in our house because there's so much pressure of water coming up from the ground that is cracking foundations, and it's actually causing our floors to peel up and bubble. So if we fill in this wetland, whether it's found jurisdictional or not, it's kind of a problem because it's going to continue to devalue our homes and cause issues for us. And I know that my floor for my thirteen hundred square foot house costs ten thousand dollars to replace. So I would ask that we protect this area. We're talking about taking out maybe nine lots in order to preserve the wetland in this area, and then like we did in Seven Sisters, pick a lot here or there as it makes sense with the wetland areas in order to allow that water to pool. Our pools are a hundred percent full over at capacity. Sometimes they run over our streets. And they're not planning for any of that right now, and they're filling in the last little bit of wetland. So I would ask that we would protect those natural resources, that natural drainage that naturally occurs and not fill it in just to put a couple more housing lots on there. I would also like to bring up in our last meeting that I felt like in the zoning commission, there were two conflicts of interest. Luke Webster is an Evergreen associate, and so obviously he benefits from additional home sales and putting as many lots on property as possible. And then I also thought that Jake had a bit of a conflict of interest as well, because he owns a forestry clearing service that goes in and maintains forests and or clears properties in order for things to be built. I know there's a housing shortage. I'm completely sympathetic. I was born and raised in Sandpoint, Idaho. I get it. But this housing development isn't going to create houses that are two hundred and three hundred thousand dollars. These are going to be six, seven, eight hundred thousand dollar homes that the median wage of a forty-four thousand dollar a year family is not going to be able to afford. This is not for Bonner County. This isn't for the city of Kootenay. This is for profit. Please, please don't let profit override common sense here. This would probably get a ton of support. I'm not even against it personally myself. If we protect the wetlands, make more space. And if we ensure that it's a reasonable amount of homes that people can actually afford here that are residents of Bonner County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gerstenberger. Ma'am?
I'm Debbie Rutan, and I live in Seven Sisters Development. First, I want to say that I agree wholeheartedly with what Ashley just said, as well as Grace Bauer. And if I have any time left over, if either of them would like to take that time, I will give it to them. I'd just like to give additional comment to the, the comments made about asking if there's conflict of interest. I know as just a regular citizen, that when you go to jury duty, that they do not pick you if you have any relationship with a person in question that's going to be tried. If you have, for instance, our child was hit by a drunk driver when he was just two years old. From that point on, if any case I was called to for being a jury, if I, I had mentioned that, of course, I was immediately excluded. I know other cases of friends who have had family members that were raped or other types of crimes that were committed. Or if they knew a personal friend that had anything at all to do with the subject at hand, they were excluded. This really concerns me about the commissioners. I don't know any of you really personally. And I'm sure you're wonderful people. I'm not saying that, but you should at least consider if there's any connection whatsoever. Mr. Bradshaw, knowing the developer for thirty-four years, I'm sorry, if you were sitting in front of a jury selection, you would be out the door. Or as a realtor, I mean, I don't know your particular, you know, what you would do or anything, but that is a concern to me as a citizen. Conflict of interest is a big deal. So I, I ask that you would consider that in your choice today. And do I have any time left? I will give it over if either of you want to speak. Thank you.
How much time do we have left? One minute.
Okay, so in addition to what I said about the wetlands and, and supporting this project, I agree with what somebody else said, where if the developer would actually work with the Seven Sisters HOA and the residents there, as well as Providence, I really don't think that we'd be getting the pushback that we're experiencing right now with it. I was born in Bonner General. You can't even have babies in Bonner General anymore because we closed that down, but more people are trying to move in. These are some of the infrastructure problems that we're looking at and with the schools and everything else. So if, if you guys decline the application and push the developer back to work with the city of Kootenay and the residents, we're open. We've been open all this time, and it seems like the more that we try to raise our concerns and say, hey, will you come and work with us? We just get less and less. So open to that. Throwing the ball over in their court that we'd love to chat with them. And traffic, absolutely. Try to pull it at that intersection at Seven Sisters and Kootenay Bay Road at around seven thirty to eight thirty, nine o'clock in the morning. You'll see, see what people are talking about. There's lots of accidents there, and if we have more houses, we're going to have more kids trying to cross that intersection and go to school. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
My name is Robert Rutan. I'm the acting president of the HOA for Seven Sisters. I am from Michigan originally, lived there most of my life, all my life, actually. I was a builder there for forty years, because you know, Michigan is a peninsula, upper and lower peninsula, a lot of water there. So we had to deal with water all the time. So my concern with this new subdivision for us and Seven Sisters is a couple of things. It's already been mentioned, but the water, stormwater issue is a big deal for us. And when you have another hundred and sixteen water collectors put on a piece of property, it won't let the water go away necessarily. It's going to impact our situation also, exactly what Ashley said. So that's my concern, and I'm going to leave the rest of my time to Al.
Good afternoon. My name is Albert Botso. I own and reside at the property located at two eighteen Chuy Loop in the Seven Sisters subdivision. I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to present my views regarding the developer's application for the Providence subdivision. Throughout the pre-approval process, there are numerous seemingly unresolved issues that the community at large has attempted to bring attention to, and that continue to remain unanswered. First and foremost is the Providence Stormwater Management Plan. Our homeowners association hired services of civil engineer, Mr. Ryan Phobes, to review the Providence Stormwater Plan, who categorically found it to be flawed and that it could propose a flooding threat to Seven Sisters. The Seven Sisters Stormwater System is already nearly at capacity. Also per, per Mr. Phobes, the zoning commission imposed condition number sixteen, attempting to ensure that the Providence Stormwater Plan would not flood Seven Sisters and/or the surrounding area. However, I respectfully submit that the Providence subdivision application should be denied until such time as they can thoroughly resolve this issue. Nearly as important is the Providence Traffic Study. That virtually fails to address the dramatically increasing traffic levels on Highway two hundred in the area that would serve a Providence Road intersection, as well as the Seven Sisters Road, Kootenay Bay Road, and Highway two hundred intersection. Backups in the early morning are now well beyond the east of Providence Road, and traffic accidents continue to increase each month. Now there is a potential commercial development at Seven Sisters and Highway two hundred, which also has not been considered in their report. The request of the IDT to develop or to install both left and right turn lanes with illumination at the intersection, and the roadwork proposed in two thousand twenty-four will not resolve the issues at hand with traffic. By their own admission, IDT's most recent traffic survey was done in the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen timeframe and is woefully inadequate. In their letter, the zoning commission has required that the developer reach out to the Idaho Transportation Department for any additional information or traffic studies on the, on the area and present it to the Board of, Board County Commissioners in their public hearing for the project. However, I respectfully submit that the Providence I respectfully submit that the Providence subdivision application be denied until such time as they can thoroughly resolve the issue for the safety of all those who use Highway two hundred, including the future residents of the Providence subdivision. Throughout the various hearings, the developer has steadfastly insisted their desire to work with the various governmental agencies, follow all the laws, regulations and ordinance to the letter, to the letter. I respectfully submit that creating a development such as Providence subdivision is more than just that. It's about creating a development that complements the surrounding area and by proactively addressing the concerns of neighboring property owners. It is also about creating a viable development from a sales standpoint. Everyone knows that over the last nine to twelve months, we have been experiencing a declining real estate market. With the added negative effect of continually increasing mortgage rates. No one knows where the market is going and how long it'll be there. And just as an aside, the issue of conflict of interest on the part of realtors is a very serious one.
Sir, if I may, because this continues to be addressed, there are no realtors on the Board of County Commissioners and this is please continue, but there's, there's no realtors on this board.
But there was realtors on the previous commission and they figured prominently in the decisions that were made. I was there.
He's, he's referring to the planning commission.
The zoning commission's. Yes, that's what I'm referring to. Okay. So the, no one knows where the market's going. And how long it will take, it will be here. Finally, throughout the hearing process, we have been constantly reminded by both the planning and zoning commissions that we must fervently protect the developers' property rights. Once again, I respectfully submit that both agencies be required to protect the property rights of the owners of the Seven Sister Subdivision and the surrounding communities with equal fervor. The thing that bothers me the most is there has been issues that have been brought up to the previous two commissions. That don't seem to get answered. They seem to be sidestepped. And that's the word that's been used in many of the discussions that we've talked about. We had an attorney present our views at the zoning commission meeting and she brought up some very valid points. But they didn't seem to hit the mark. They didn't seem to be listened to. In the interest of transparency, I believe that what should happen with this application is that it be denied and that some of these issues be resolved so that the transparency issue is very clear to all of us in that community. I appreciate the time.
Thank you. Did you? Did you email that also? Did you already put that?
Yes, okay.
Hello, Molly McCann with the Lakes Commission. My concern is about this purported approved jurisdictional wetland determination in conditions of approval number eleven under wetland delineation, quote, the wetland delineation study has been submitted to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers requesting a jurisdictional determination. So, and end quote. So that's not something the Corps of Engineers issues for subdivision review. They're not going to come out and look at the site and determine whether it's a wetland or not. And it's not part of any part of any county process to determine jurisdictional wetlands. It goes on to say, A, if the wetland as delineated by the wetland specialists are found to be jurisdictional by the Corps, future building shall maintain a twenty foot setback. Again, the Corps is not going to make that determination for the county. And under B, if the agency determines the delineated wetlands to be non-jurisdictional, then the plat may be modified. And I would argue if for some reason a determination happens, may shall be changed to shall because it's jurisdictional is irrelevant here. So both A and B are stating that there are delineated wetlands on the site. And there's, so one, there's no requirement in county code that says this needs to be jurisdictionally determined anywhere. Two, there is not a service the Corps provides to the county for subdivision review and they're not going to determine that for you. So the county code is concerned about protecting the property owner from flooding and property loss. Not, not whether they are violating federal jurisdiction. The county code is saying, we don't want people building on land that floods. We don't want people building on land that is wet. Because that is a hazard and it causes harm to the public and future landowners. The fact is, certain areas of this property are prone to flooding because they are wetlands, hydroic and aerobic soils that don't drain. That, that is not only proven by the delineation report, but by the soil classification, prime farmland if drained. This soil is prone to flooding and can legitimately cause financial harms to the property owner who purchases, purchases there. Reviewing these factors is required in your code under environmental standards. Purpose to protect its community from loss of lives and property and to reduce public and private financial losses due to flood, fire, et cetera. The county has been provided adequate evidence that the property has wetlands and poorly drained soils and that those areas need to be avoided. This proposed subdivision design is required to demonstrate that fact in this application and at this hearing today. Not at some later date when some imaginary memos coming from the Corps. So I am hopeful you will ask the applicant to go back to the drawing board. As this design fails to meet conclusions of law one, two, three, five, and eight as presented in the staff report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Ray Calhoun. And I'm a CPA for fifty some years. And I live on Kildare in that community. And I keep seeing that or sensing that the the project is part of the community of Cootney. And part of the community of Seven Sisters. Well, it's the community of Providence, Beaver Creek and Kildare. That's the part of the community that it is. And it's part of, it's in the county. It's not in the city of Cootney. So it is separate from our community that we have. And we've been there for twenty some years. I've been there for six. And I like the way it is. I, I love the way it is. There are five and ten acre parcels. These ten thousand foot square foot parcels are inconsistent with the use that is part of the very adjacent communities. Right across the street, I see a, a, a a couple of fives, tens, and then there's eleven acre parcels. Now that doesn't seem to be the highest and best use of that land to me. I would suspect that that land could be better used if it was consistent at five acre parcels or some, some thing like that. And I don't know how this just came about that I always thought that was part of the city of, of, of Cootney because they have their, their monument right there on county property now, not on, not on city property. And so I was expecting that there would be a flow through and access to the to the the, the Cootney City and, and there isn't any. And there's a big, what would you call it? A a big reluctance to do that and to, to allow that to be shared. And I want to bring up another point that I hope is the one point, but I was in San Diego when we had the cedar fires. And the cedar fire in my neighborhood, we lost sixteen residents. And it was all because of access. They died in their cars. They died in their cars because they were stopped in traffic. The, the could, could not get away from the, from the flames. And you know, when the flames come in a, in a firestorm, they, they make their own weather. They change their and we had on the back of our property, on the back of our road, we had a nice big gate with a fence. And we had, because it was there for the fire department to unlock. And guess what? There were, all the fire assets were gone. They were, they were off in other places. And you know, that's kind of unfair because the cedar fire was one of the biggest fires in California's history. And, but still, you have to deal with that real possibility that putting the, those hundred and sixteen lots and families and everything between us and the access to us getting out of the, the harms way in a fire is, is, is possible. And so I keep hearing things that are suggesting with
Mr. Calvin, could we?
They were going to give me three more minutes.
Oh, do you have someone?
My name is Brenda Fitchett and I live on Kildare. He is my neighbor and I donate my three minutes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you. And so you have the situation with the, with the fire and you, you're, you're not in the city of Cootney. You're in the county and the county's community right next door to you is inconsistent with this plan completely. And you know, we're, we're kind of picking on, on stormwater and, and wetlands and everything else, but that's not consistent with all those people have been driving down that road for twenty years. And thirty-five? Okay. I don't know how, how old it is. I know mine, my little section's twenty, but I don't think that you can as, as county supervisors, say that that's consistent with the neighborhood that already exists. You know, comparing it to Seven Sisters, a nice neighborhood that's, that's complete might be up someone's, it's, it's just not a concern of mine because I don't go to Seven Sisters. I don't have access to it. And we have little kids out there. They're already going to have trouble getting to school. So, one, having a fire access that's, that's locked up somehow in an emergency may not, may not be a fire access, may not be an escape route. And two, the, the existing community that you're attaching to here is one of five and ten acre parcels. It's not, you're not attaching to city of Cootney. You're attaching to the community that's off of Providence Road. Beaver Brook and Kildare. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to testify against this project? Ma'am.
Hi, my name is Leilani Williams and I live on Beaver Brook off of Providence. For the last seven years during the winter time, we have a divot where the water does come through and it floods out both the side that they're going to build on and through the, the road and then over to the next person's house on Providence. This is a huge concern for me because I've had to redo two different cars, tie rods because of this per, you know, because of the waters coming through these roads. And they're talking about building or paving the road all the way down to the end of their property, which if you can see where their property ends, where that line is, that's right there where that culver is. And that culver, that whole area just gets mangled during the, during the winter and the, and the spring. And they're going to pave up to that point. So if somebody accidentally doesn't get into wherever it is, because we haven't seen where they're actually going to go into their property yet, unless that's where they have the gravel. I don't know. But if they miss that turn and they go down, there's no place to turn around except for on private property. And they're going to be going into and causing more damage to that road. Right now, even at the very end of the road during the winter and during the spring, it's, it's horrific. So I don't know where they think that they're going to put the road halfway down and then not have it go further to where those people could have like a turnaround or something. I'm, and, and I'm with Ray. I, you know, we are Providence Road. We have, you know, eighty, seventy-eight acres and twelve acres and fourteen acres and ten acres. We don't have ten thousand square feet. Seven Sisters is only a small portion of that. That whole section there is Providence Road. And if, you know, for me, if I was you guys, I would be looking at it, okay. I'm here for you, the people of Sandpoint. They're the developers. Yeah, they want to bring homes in. But we don't need a hundred and sixteen homes at, like they said, six hundred thousand dollars. We need forty homes at maybe five hundred thousand dollars to give people an opportunity to live here and enjoy what this town is about. And it's not a hundred and sixteen homes with two hundred and thirty-two cars running out of a one lane. You have to move over and almost get into the ditch, which we've pulled each other out of ditches every single winter because there is not enough room on those roads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the room that would like to testify against this project before we go to the online votes? Jenna, is there any hands up from the people online? Thank you, online people. Heather, go ahead. Who states your name for the record?
Heather, can you unmute yourself, please?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, my name's Heather Bous and I just wanted to voice my concerns. I had to leave early because I had to go get kids from Cootney Elementary. And we just live over there on Beaver Brook. And that school really is at capacity. And I know and I understand that that's not the responsibility of the county to facilitate schools for the kids, but that is part of our community. And I really hope that that's taken into consideration on what we're going to do with our kids, what our education looks like for our kids. We know that communities that are not well educated don't do well. And so I really raise concerns and hopes for the county to keep that into consideration with what are we doing to provide services for our kids? Thank you.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Is there anyone else, Jenna? Susan, would you unmute yourself and state your name for the record, please?
Me at all. Hello?
Go ahead. You're pretty faint now.
Oh, really? Okay. I'll try to talk louder then. Susan Bowman, for the record, I live in the Sully Valley. And I just want to remind the commissioners that your main, the main thing that commissioners are to do is to provide for the public health, safety and welfare of all of the residents of Bonner County. One of the reasons that public involvement is invited in these types of hearings is because these folks know more about their neighborhood than you do. They know about, I think you've heard a lot of evidence today about the public health, safety and welfare. There are a lot of questions that seem to be unanswered by the developer. And you know, as to wetlands, the water is going to go somewhere. So whether, it doesn't matter if, you know, the Army Corps decides this or that. None of that matters. What matters is that the water is going to go somewhere. And so, you know, you have to provide for that. The other thing I'd like to say about the safety is that you know, Northside Fire, they, you know, they, they don't have a huge staff. I don't know if people understand this, but when there's a, a, a structure fire, you're probably going to have one firefighter initially coming to that structure fire because, you know, we pay low taxes for a reason. So, you know, that should be taken into consideration. If there was a, a massive train wreck, how are all those people going to get out? How are the people behind the Providence subdivision going to get out? And the other thing I'd like to say is that you have an ACI for a reason. These folks, these developers should be working with the city of Cootney. And I, I'm just going to say that, you know, obviously what's coming into play here is developer greed. And we've seen it a lot. And all these questions are being unanswered. And so I think you have enough today to say, look, there's a lot of questions here that are unanswered and we should not be voting on this today. Just because the zoning commission said that it was okay. They're not experts on stormwater. They're not experts on, on wetlands. And then finally, I would like to say that infrastructure is really, really important. And what I, I believe the planning department should be doing is not punting all this stuff to some final plat. The engineering and all of that. The engineering and all of that should be done prior to this being approved. So that you can handle, you know, that that the subdivision will be able to handle all of these issues that the neighbors are bringing up. So again, I hope that you will, at the very least, punt this until you have all of the questions answered and that you will provide for the public health, safety and welfare of this community. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Bowman. Is there anybody else online? All right, online humans and people in the room, go to once. Twice. John, you unmute yourself and state your name for the record, please. John? Your mouse? John, this is Commissioner Ahmet. If you're out there, I'm going to close the hearing. If I don't hear you unmute yourself and give us your testimony, sir. All right, is there anybody else that has a hand raised in the room or otherwise that has not previously spoken? All right, at this time, I will close the public hearing. And I will turn it back over to the applicant or rebuttal if they choose.
Hi, again, my name is Mike Amick. You know, I didn't state this before. I I was born and raised here, multiple generations. Development happens. People move here for a reason. A lot of you moved here for the same reason. Other people want to move here. You know, and and until the ex-councilperson got up and spoke, I wasn't going to speak about some of the City of Cootenay stuff. I worked with the City of Cootenay before and their attorney had to write an agreement that their engineer would not come on my property or the city street that I was working on because of things that had happened. At that time, I was building a house for the mayor of Cootenay, Nancy Lewis. It was the second house I built for her because I did a good job on the first one. I also sold her that piece of property. The city told her that I would rip her off and not build a good house for her. That's the type of person I was. She laughed about that. So, so here I am, again. It's part of the reason that I do not want to annex into the City of Cootenay. I asked for a meeting for the City of Cootenay and it was misrepresented what that meeting was about. I asked for a meeting to come and see if we could reach an agreement to where if we did a subdivision, it could be annexed later. I wish all the people that have been to these meetings were at that meeting. They were not at the meeting. But that's what I asked for. I know these people will not rubber stamp anything. I know there's a process to go through. I'm here to go through the process. That's what I'm here to do. It's, you know, the the whole, the whole thing out there. That that property, I believe, was in nineteen seventy-eight, was owned to be a subdivision of ten thousand square foot or less. So I I did ask, there was something about the ACI approval on on the plat. I I I asked early on for that to be removed. That will be removed from the plat. I I knew that they wouldn't fully agree to this, but there's a signature spot on that where where they will be signed. The fire access, I agree, it would be safer without a gate. When I was at the City of Cootenay, they said no way would we have access to that road if I didn't annex them. So, so now I I believe we have legal access to the road. We can get into that later. But it's like, okay, how do we work best, right? And that's, don't access the city at all. Then we have to have a road. So now what do we do, right? We we use our legal easement onto that property to put in a culvert so that there's fire access. Now, now I hear the concerns and and I don't blame them of a gate being if if the county says, build that without a gate, we're we're interested in building without a gate. If you say put a gate on it, we're here to put a gate on. I mean, whatever those conditions are, I'm I'm not here to fight all that. If I was here to fight all that, I would be fighting that. Here to just try to state some facts and talk about what what we are doing. Our our intent, and I believe it's on the paperwork, is for there to be a pedestrian path alongside that fire access. Or there to be a gate on this point, you know. Whether that changes with you guys or or whatever we have to do there, then I'm fine with that. You know, we're we're writing a check for a million dollars to Cootenay Pondray Sewer District. It's not like everyone out here paying all of our costs of all this. Then there will be other people who who have hookups and pay a monthly fee to use that sewer. All that will be paid. That's not, that's, you know, there's there's some misconception here of what goes on. Cootenay has approved subdivisions of the same size before. The county has approved subdivisions of the same size before, the same density, same lot size. We're here to just ask for what other people have, what you of Seven Sisters have, a certain sized lot in a certain sized subdivision. My hope is that our engineering and our implementation of all of this will be better so that there won't be all the groundwater problems. I don't want to see those problems. I'm going to have to go around this town and see people. And I want to be able to look them in the eye and say, I was honest about this. And I can comfortably do that. So I can go around this town and say that 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 I was honest and I did what I said I was going to do. I don't feel we're doing anything that is negative. There are people who disagree, but my opinion is there's nothing negative here we're doing. We're allowing other people to live here. If there was no subdivisions here, most of the people here wouldn't be. Whether that's a five acre, a one acre, a quarter acre, it's 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 part of growth and and the growth is going to happen. You know, the the wetlands, the Army Corps does determine jurisdiction over it. There was a court case. All that'll come out. They determine whether they have jurisdiction over the wetland. And that's not up to me. And wetlands is also a science. It's not some person who has no idea, looking at the ground and going, we think that's wetlands. Those ditches in the picture, those were dug, they set there over a year. Those those ditches are still there. We're required to leave them there until the Army Corps makes their when they've been out there, they were in those ditches looking, they took pictures of them. It's it's part of the whole process that that we're going through on this. You know, along Providence there, we are improving date drainage that I believe we weren't required to improve. The engineer can speak more to that. Which will hopefully help that road base be a better road base. Hopefully it all improves it. I don't know the engineering. There's a county engineer that's going to have to review all this. He is a competent licensed engineer. He will review what is designed by our engineer and then approve it or tell him, go back to earth. When it's installed, they come out and inspect that to make sure that it's put in right. And my hope is that the two engineers can work good together to make this be a good project for the community. That it would be good homes, that families can be raised. You know, I I I know you guys don't know me personally, but but that's what I believe in. That's that's who I am. I I I want good for people. I really do. At this point, I think that's all I've got.
Great. Mauricio Cardona, I'm not going to say too much since Mike has covered most of it. But essentially, we're here for a preliminary plat. Whatever is necessary to be done right will be done right. That is part of getting the final one. Also, we're here following a process that is designed through law and standards that regulates how private property should be used and not taken. We're not here asking for any special deviations from the rules or the engineering standards. We have met all of the standards as currently required by law. If the standards are not what people want, the standards need to be changed. What we can do is have private property owners follow the laws and the regulations established by our government. And then when it comes time to make a decision, change the rules on them. None of you will expect that and the same should be given to all. There were some comments about the conflicts of interest. The standards given were for criminal cases. Those are not applicable to civil cases. The City of Cootenay cannot force annexation without eminent domain. So I understand that the City of Cootenay is highly interested in the development that is occurring. And according to the agreement between the jurisdictions, county and city, you get to hear what their concerns are, but you get to decide according to the law of the county, not to the law of the Cootenay, the City of Cootenay. Going to water, I agree with the Lake Commission that the soils here are are difficult. They are not the kind of soils that allow water to go through them. So we get accumulation of water. I believe that is also what the engineers have found. Those determinations are independent of whether it is wetlands to be protected. This is just accumulation of water. The engineers are coming up with a stormwater plant. This is a preliminary plat, so the engineering will happen to determine and make sure that the waters can be taken care of. It would be unfair to require full engineering at this stage of the process. We should not be imposing those specific requirements on one developer versus everybody else. If the county wants to see full-blown engineering for all aspects of a project, you can do it through law, but do not impose a specific requirements on one developer. Going to the traffic, yes, traffic is an issue and it affects everybody, especially those most local to it. Your job is to look at this for the benefit of the whole county and the whole road systems. And bringing these additional taxpayers into the county is going to provide you with more tools to deal with a problem that is not only Providence Road. This is a problem we have all over the place. I believe it was just last week we had the main end access to Sandpoint block for hours to noon. All these things are systematic. We must also notice that Seven Sisters was approved as a staged development. So everybody who bought it there knew that it was likely there was going to be more development coming. The agencies have had a chance to opine. They have requested certain accommodations that go beyond what one may have expected. But we're complying with them. That is how the post is supposed to work. We look at the agencies that are dispassionate, who are evaluating standards and are requiring that we meet those neutral standards. While I understand the neighbors and the impact this is going to have on them and I understand the City of Cootenay and their great interest in this, the way we take away people's private property is either through eminent domain or we get them to agree to voluntarily give it up. So in short, I would like to end by asking the commissioners to approve this preliminary plat to impose conditions that you feel are necessary, but not to impose conditions that go beyond what you will impose on any other development. We don't want to be a place where developers are to expect post-factor requirements after they have complied with every standard of the law. I I believe North Idaho is a place that attracts people for freedom from government, not from government that changes the rules that they have already imposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Gaddick. Sorry, I can apologize in advance for the shotgun scatter approach. I was taking notes as people were talking. At this time, it is our intent for the fire apparatus access road to be gated. And as stated, emergency services can't open the gate to allow public access. I had a personal conversation with the Northside Fire Chief and he said they would do that in the event of an emergency. But let's not also forget that the subdivision is equipped with fire hydrants capable of delivering fire flows per IFC code requirements. Cootenay Pondray Sewer District is, I believe, under developing a facility plan currently to upgrade their wastewater plant. And they did receive a grant for that. That is accurate. As Mike pointed out, this development will pay a million dollars new user facility fees into the Cootenay Pondray Sewer District system. That is independent of the actual cost of installing the infrastructure itself. This, that's in addition to it. The same is true for water. So both Sandpoint Water and KPSD Sewer will be getting on the order of a million dollars to help for their existing system improvements. There's been a couple of comments about traffic and and specifically the Ponder Point intersection, Cootenay Bay Road, Seven Sisters. Our traffic study indicates that there'll be seventy-two peak hour trips traveling inbound towards Sandpoint. That's the equivalent of one point two trips per minute during the peak hour. Any issues with that subdivision or not as a result of Providence Road, which would be a miniscule contribution to that intersection. There's been a couple of comments about stormwater and this development or this property serving as a stormwater repository for Seven Sisters. If that is the case, that is actually a violation of the approved stormwater management plan for Seven Sisters subdivision approved by the City of Cootenay. That indicated all drainage from those lots would drain inward towards the property, not outwards. Our plan will regrade the property, remove the bathtubs that were evident in some of the photos that were shared. We do not in any way disagree with the fact that all soils in this area are poor. They do not drain. There's typically mission silt loam, Sandpoint, Pondray, Cootenay. The codes that we are required to follow, take that into consideration. We do not count on any infiltration of stormwater. Rather, we're required to balance the post-development and pre-development rate of discharge leaving the site. You do that by detaining stormwater and controlling its release. So you slow the release. And we're required to show that by calculations and grading plans. Sorry, I'm trying to follow these. There was an assertion that an independent engineer reviewed it and found the stormwater plan deficient. I have not seen that review, so I can't speak to that. I do have comments on the preliminary plan that was submitted to Bonner County, reviewed by their engineer. And he basically wanted final grading plans to go with that, which we are currently developing and anticipate having for him shortly. Regarding the wetlands, I think Mike spoke to this as well. The Corps of Engineers will absolutely review whether those wetlands are jurisdictional. I've seen this personally in numerous projects. That's why they conducted their site visit last week. And if they determine it jurisdictional, there are means and methods for either getting a permit or avoiding those wetlands. And if they determine non-jurisdictional, they're not under the course purview. And I think that covers everything. So we're happy to answer any questions. Do you have a question, Spotty? I was going to wait to see if the applicant and I would, I was going to, my intention is to turn it over to staff for additional comments. Commissioner Williams, do you have any questions for the applicant?
No.
Commissioner Bradshaw out there in Old Texas, you got any comments for the applicant? I have no questions for you.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, Commissioner. However,
I won't comment on the conflict.
Could we wait until after we get the the piece from staff and hold on, it is three forty and as I said, we're going to, it is three forty, we are taking up.
we're gonna, it is three forty, we are taking a five minute recess.
Okey dokey.
Welcome. I'm here in two. It is three forty-five on October second, twenty twenty-three, and we are returning out of recess to file S zero 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 two dash twenty-three, Providence subdivision. And I am now going to turn it over to staff for a response and then for the commissioners, for the board to be able to ask questions.
Um, good afternoon, commissioners again, and I'm here to address the concern about wetlands in Bonner County revised code. So this is what our code says about wetlands. It says, a recall, when you see a wetland on the property, a reconnaissance is required that is accepted or authorized by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers to determine the wetland boundaries. And if, and then second part of that is wetland delineation is required that shall be based on wetland reconnaissance that has been accepted and authorized by U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So U.S. Army Corps of Engineers still has jurisdiction over wetlands. And we are to follow, our code says to follow the jurisdiction or, or the determination that is made by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. When the, when the reconnaissance study is accepted or authorized by them. That's all I had. Does the commission have any questions for me?
Are there any questions, uh, Commissioner Williams or Commissioner Bradshaw for staff? In regards to any of the information presented today?
No.
Before we deliberate, Bill Wilson, can you give a comment on the concern expressed by members of the public regarding conflict of interest as it relates to Commissioner Bradshaw and, and Commissioner Almond mentioned he was in a thirty minute meeting, that way we clear that up before we move forward, please.
So this is Bill Wilson, I'm deputy prosecutor and um, this is news to me that um, there's a relationship or potential relationship between Commissioner Bradshaw and the developer. The, the standard that we see in Lupa for conflicts of interest with board members um, is whether or not there's a junior benefit um, to the commissioner or a member of his family or business partner. So if Commissioner Bradshaw is a business partner with, with the developer here today, that would be a problem. But just based on uh, friendship or a duration of, of a relationship, that wouldn't be a basis to compute the conflict of interest. Um, as to a contribution from a legal advisor for the um, developer. And, and that seems pretty interrogated to me as to whether, I don't think that would also um, amount to a conflict of interest. Given the short timeframe that I've got, I don't know any more details than that, but in its face, I don't see it as a first thing.
And then Commissioner Almond attending a zoning meeting.
Right, so um, to the, I mean, this, all the zoning commissions deliberations and other matters are transmitted to this board, so I don't even know if that constitutes an ex parte communication. To the extent that it does, the way you hear that is you just identified on record, Commissioner Almond has done. So um, I don't believe that that constitutes any sort of impermissible conduct.
Okay. So hopefully everybody understands why we're gonna move forward and it's clear on the record as to why they'll maintain.
Uh, Commissioner Bradshaw, did you have something you wanted to say in regards to that matter?
Yeah, uh, I've known Mike a long time, we don't hunt and fish together. We've never had any business dealings together. I've just known him, I've been here since eighty-eight. Uh, a lot of people in that room I know, but I don't run with them, I don't hunt and fish with them. I don't go have dinner with them, I don't have any business dealings with them, I just know who they are. And so I just know who he is and I've known him for a long time. We've never done any business, I don't know that we've even ever ate lunch together. So I just wanted, wanted that in the record.
Alright, thank you. So for myself, when I'm
Uh-huh, thank you.
So the findings of fact, I'd like to bring up in reference to our deliberation. And this is page thirty-one, if you wanted to follow. Tonight is Zonex Suburban, it has a land use designation, it's per Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash four one two. The minimum, minimum required lot size is ten thousand feet. In a suburban district, all urban services are available. Uh, with the availability of urban sewer services and the absence of urban water services, one acre with the availability of only urban water services and the absence of urban sewer services. However, this project, the following one, the project has received will serve letters from the Cootenay Pondure Sewer District on June twenty-third of twenty twenty-three. And that it has received a will serve letter from the city of Sandpoint in reference on July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. The applicant has submitted preliminary road design plans dated May twenty twenty-third as part of the application submission. The applicant also submitted a traffic impact study to Bonner County for review. Both were reviewed by the Bonner County Road and Bridge Department. And then following the zoning commission meeting, it was referred back to ITV. And ITV said at this time, based on the information that the department has and after a review from the committee, ITV is going to left and right illumination and left and right tunnel lands to Providence Road which Africa, the seven fair manhood to, as they have agreed, but repeatedly through this file, they have said that they are manhood to all conditions that align with Bonner County Revised Code. The request for review of the project reception, Northside Fire District from April two, end July seventh, twenty twenty-three.
You didn't go to Fairbend?
Preliminary plat proposing a five foot wide public utility easement and fire access easement for secondary emergency fire apparatus access road. The plat has been reviewed by the fire district and the latest comment received from the fire district states, we are satisfied with the additional fire access easement entering the subdivision off of Seven Sisters Drive. This is depicted on the plat map as note seventeen, a twenty-five foot wide public utility easement and fire access easement. If this access easement is not approved by the city of Cootenay, we will require another emergency fire access easement to be established. However, in reference to what our road and bridge department has said, that brings me to an important, important point that Mr. Mulder, our staff engineer, reviewed it and he brought forth that a sixty foot utility at Egress, Egress being called out, which is on a different lot, is critical to preserve emergency access. Which I think is an exceedingly important point that multiple members of the public have brought up in regards to access and uh, emergency services. There were a number of options that the Bonner County Road and Bridge Department, who is here if we had questions, could answer, but the Bonner County Road and Bridge Department proposes that in case the proposed emergency access is not approved by the city of Cootenay, which it appears there has been at least approval for the twenty-five foot, that there was another access, an alternate emergency access provided through Firestone Land on a Bonner County owned public right of way. The project is proposed to be served by Avista Utilities. The school district does not necessarily have a comment other than the acknowledgement that when you get a lot of kids, uh, seats get full. And in that case, that becomes the responsibility of the school district. Bonner County Revised Code six twelve dash six two five Trails and Parks was addressed by both the zoning commission and was addressed by staff in their remarks, talking that the proposal put forth by the applicant does meet irrespective of the code interpretation, the project proposes, and this is number eighteen, connecting the residential lots and the subdivision through a five foot wide pathway along the internal roads in the subdivision. This fact was presented to the zoning commission in their hearing on August seventeenth, twenty twenty-three. And this is supported by the finding of facts and the conditions of approval from the zoning commission's recommendation letter to the board dated August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three. The subdivision is not contiguous to any public lands. Subdivision is not contiguous to any public streams, lakes, or ponds as identified in the national wetland inventory maps. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers jurisdiction over whether the wetlands on the property are waters of the United States is awaited. Bonner County does not have a county facilities acquisition plan in any way with this property. If we are to approve this, it is after the preliminary plat is approved, the subdivider shall have an improvement plan for the subdivision prepared by a registered civil engineer. Two copies of the improvement plan shall be filed with the county engineer. And this plan shall include the following. So many of the concerns that were put forth in this hearing and, and addressed by the applicant's legal counsel are, this is a preliminary plat, this is not a final plat, this is a part of the legal process. Yes, the dirt there is a challenge. Uh, owed in some silt loam and Mission Silt Loam, which is prime farmland if drained with a drainage classification of poorly drained. Mission Silt Loam classified as prime farmland if drained with a drain classification, classification of somewhat poorly drained, which is what leads to the necessary engineering, which the applicant has clearly stated that they are uh, willing to work to be able to address the stormwater runoff. Which the applicant submitted a stormwater management and grading plan dated five May twenty twenty-three, prepared by Justin Shaw, an Idaho licensed engineer. Plan has been reviewed by the Bonner County Engineering Department. And it appears that Mr. Ferguson sent some uh, requests for additional information that the applicant is prepared to address. The preliminary plan was considered by the governing body currently with the corresponding subdivision application, both by the hearing examiner and the zoning commission at their respective public hearings. Similarly, the preliminary plan is and has been presented today for that. Per Bonner County Revised Code twelve dash seven twenty-four point four C, once Bonner County, and that's if we approve the preliminary plan and correspond an application prior to any development, the applicant shall submit to the planning department the required fees and final grading stormwater management and erosion control plan that meets the applicable requirements of sections twelve dash seven twenty-three point one through cell twelve dash seven twenty-six of this subchapter. And that's in reference to the process which we are here today to address according to law. And this is a preliminary plat. The, there was not no local, state, or federal agencies had identified any critical wildlife habitats on or within the vicinity of the subject property. The wetlands has been addressed, but we continue to wait. And a big one for me, which as I read through a number of the uh, public comments was about the ACI. But the current ACI, which is what we are held to, was entered between the city of Cootenay and Bonner County, which is ordinance number two fifty-seven. And it was signed on November tenth, nineteen ninety-four. And that is the rules that we are judging this file by. For myself, I am in support of this project with one condition of approval which needs to be changed, and that is I would advocate that instead of a twenty-five foot wide easement um, onto Wheela Loop, it would be a sixty foot wide easement onto Wheela Loop. As I was looking at this file last night and I was looking at it through G I F, it is clear that there are roads to nowhere in the Seven Sisters development. And those roads were clearly designed to go somewhere. And as someone who lived off across the street, I remember when that too was field. Uh, it makes sense to me for the safety of the general public, for the city of Cootenay, and for both developments and the future planning of Bonner County, that that would be a sixty foot wide and I would add that in to a condition of approval. Hold on. And so at this time, I am in favor of that, that is the one condition of approval for myself that would have to be included in this process in order for my vote. And then I'm curious what the, what the other board members have to say and I am prepared to make a motion.
So I have a few concerns regarding this project, one of which is the statement that says that there's insufficient capacity um, space in the system reserved for proposed project and no new user facility fees have been purchased as a Um, space in the system reserved for proposed project and no new user facility fees have been purchased as of today's date, which was the writing of. Uh, the statement from Cutney Pondre's sewer district. When I'm looking at this, there's. There's a good end thing is that the community is willing to sit down and have the discussion about some of the things that. The developer is willing to actually put in place, but it 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 looks like we're kind of rushing and bypassing some. Elements of this, and so I'm gonna go kind of um. Lupa line by line, so and start with our community design, um, which has been updated and accepted by the board already. Which is in order to preserve natural features and real atmosphere of the community, the Cowanation and Act Development Standards that address design standards. That account for waterfront setbacks, commercial industrial landscaping, reducing lighting cluster development. Development rural rather than urban setback standards and other design objectives aimed at preserving the real nature. Uh, natural character of the community in this particular area, that is a significant density impact to that area, which does impact the community design. And so what we've heard from some members of the public is not that it isn't a good space to develop, but the number of housing going in there. Um, is negatively impact the design of that community. That's one of the things that um, when you look at kind of the comments from people, they're focused on. It's not, it doesn't line up with with the community design there. So when I look at um, there is an issue with um, safety. Uh, because of going in and coming out, and I do understand that that has been addressed at some level. Uh, but that is a valid concern that isn't clearly identified what the plan would be. But it is clearly stated that your group is willing to do whatever is necessary to resolve that fire safety hazard. But it also still leaves a community with that concern because it hasn't been clearly identified. Um, when I look at school facilities, it is part of our infrastructure and that. Increased dense population negatively does impact the infrastructure, and so it isn't. It isn't right to say that it is, that's just going to happen, do we have the school infrastructure? To support that amount of development um, in that particular area, and when you look at the current. Population of the schools, it's not supporting that, and so where does that come from? And so that that the valid concern from the community is they are then taking on the cost of the development. Be cut through a failing infrastructure related to the school aspect because there's, they're already at their capacity now. That there's a reason that we ask for the school's input on what it is that we're doing when it comes to development because that development. It's not, you you don't know whether it's going to be one kids, five kids, ten kids per household, you don't know that number, but right now the number is. We have a need for a a a bigger school essentially, so there is a, there is a negative that comes from that. There is, I I do understand both why you don't want to go into the city, which is your choice. But the that kind of creates that concern from the community of. That they want it done at the beginning so that it meets design standards, you don't want to meet the design standards of the county because or the city because of. Prior issues with the city, but some of the issues that the city brings forth could be addressed with that. Um, adjustment and I do, there was actually quite a few people that made this comment of. Eventually it will have to be pulled into um, Cutney County, so why not or Cutney. City, so why not do it now and be in compliance versus wait until later? And so that is part of that future development and planning of the community of if you know you're going to go there now, why not be. In the position where you're in compliance with what they're asking for, because they're not really asking for unreasonable, they're asking for if you're going to. To develop, you're you're heading that direction already. Population is a big one, um. And when you're looking at our comprehensive plan, and one of the things that our cop plan does is it actually shows the significant growth. With um, not just an aging population, but it specifically addresses the increased population density. And it describes also the area of city impact and migration to urban areas, that is a full on. Increase in density in an area that is unincorporated, it's not part of the city without the infrastructure. So that type of population does negatively impact the existing infrastructure and put the. That kind of some burden on the existing people in that area, one of the things that our comprehensive plan um. That concerns me over area of city impact is Sandpoint has already said. They need to review their area of city impact with the county because it needs to actually be expanding. Because of the way growth is, and one of the issues that has come up is. Uh, water and sewer is one of the things that they talk about is what can we absorb and what needs to be changed, one of them has our. Sandpoint needing to pay attention to their septic system and how many people they're putting on it, I know that you guys addressed some of that in your. Plan, but that is also an impact to the existing because. The existing people are going to feel the effects of a that type of development um, before. I understand um, the frustration when. As a developer, that's your land, you need to make money on your land, it's an investment, doesn't matter. Uh, but also as people that live around it, it is the growth that needs to be responsible because of the absorption of that. A lot of people hear that term um. Affordable housing, it's it's not, that's not what we're doing, it's this is just we're building on land that we own, affordable housing, I think it's. It's been taken as if that's what developers are trying to push on a community when it's, this is a good plan from your direction as a developer. To increase the profit on the land that you invested in, that's not a negative thing, that's what we all do. It's an investment that people want to extract the money from, so I don't want to, you know. Developers are not negative, we need developers, we need people to buy houses, um, but it's not an affordable. Yours is not an affordable housing plan and it doesn't need to be, um, so I don't want to kind of. Have that kind of idea continue. Um, economic development is, it's not just whether or not people have housing in the areas, what are the jobs and the availability and bringing in people. Um, that in some ways can attract people um, to want to work in Bonner County, so that's an area where increasing um. Your ability to have more people might help with economic development, um, for me, it still hinges on the idea of. The infrastructure burden that comes with that significant of an increase in density. I am not uh, confident in kind of the explanation on the wetlands that's being given, we've seen that more than once in Bonner County, we have a lot of wetlands. We have a lot of people at this particular time, we are in a holding pattern because you're waiting for. The federal government to be able to identify what we're supposed to do. This has come up in other areas where even our council has tried to work with planning to see what can the county do? And we don't actually have that answer, and so the concern from natural resource wetlands is. So why are we going to make decisions that could negatively impact that type of uh, area? Before we know the answer of how we should be developing responsibly, knowing that we have wetlands, because when you look at wetlands. You also have to look at the health and safety of the people around you, just like with. Transportation, just like with housing, just like with the increased density, just like with fire, all of that infrastructure stuff comes with increased density. There is something to be gained by having the open dialogue with the community. That you are wanting to do a large development next to because it can have a meeting of the minds of the direction. You've done a really good job of explaining. What you're willing to do in order to make this project move forward, there's some areas that. I have concerns on is how we're in compliance with the comprehensive plan. With respect to our community design, our transportation, school facilities, population. And uh, natural resources, which I believe that's where their housing are wetlands. And so for me, this isn't necessarily a denial, for me, it is a, I think that this needs to go back to the drawing board and have. A more clear plan, I've seen this happen where you get the green light and then people move forward and then it just becomes an odd lot change versus. We have a clear plan for both the developer and the community of how we're going to move forward on this project. Um, I don't see it as clear, I, there's a lot of people that, there's a lot of agencies that actually did give comments with. Ideas of what needs to be changed and some of those are a little bit fluid. I do think that there is value in looking at, uh, and Bill can chime in on this if he wants to, the city of Cutney. The area of city impact, that's pretty significant of an impact. And it feels like it's it it from some of the letters that have come in and conversations in this area. There is a need to grow the issue, and so if we're not going to be part of Cutney County, Cutney. City, then we are going to stay unincorporated, which doesn't have the infrastructure and we're relying on different relationships and is that a negative or a positive or. Is there value in. Looking at, if if you didn't choose, because it's not just that you're not wanting to um. Go into the the city, you don't want to make adjustments for some of the things that they identified as things that they would like to see. Um, and then when you come to the point where maybe it does have to be annexed. One of they were very clear, it's they want this before it that happens, not after it happens, and so. We would potentially be causing more hardship for not just the existing uh, area, but also the people that would buy a home there. So for me, this is a um. I think this is a go back, this significant increase in uh, density in this particular area that is unincorporated, but within that area of impact. Um, I have concerns regarding the water um. And some of the requirements from uh, septic that they have as well, so I guess we'll see what Commissioner Bradshaw has to say.
Mister Bradshaw, you're out there.
So I think, I think he's met every requirement other than that sixty foot setback that's uh. Necessary for preliminary plat, a lot of the other issues that are brought up. Uh, are not necessarily required by law at this stage in the game, they would be required at final. Uh, unless we change laws, uh, we can't require him to do things that we haven't made other people do, as Mister Cardona said, so. I'm ready to move forward with the vote now. A motion at this time.
I'm, I want to clarify that that the the board actually can have requests of a developer, it's actually in the ordinance, so it wouldn't be. Singling out a developer um, for anything, what it is would be doing is it would allow us to actually have. A plan for the whole project and the future planning, which is, which is what we're supposed to be doing, is looking at the impact of the future of what we do. And it's not just the future of the growth, but also the future relationships, because in this case. You have community that want to sit down and have the discussion on growth, and that doesn't mean that the naysayer gets to make a decision on development, but it can tear down the walls of discontent. As you continue to move forward, and so. That there is not an actual future plan of this area in place by either city, county, or developer. But we do know the negative impacts of the growth, and if. We ignore our own comp plan, which says the increasing population dis- density in the area of city impact. And migration to urban areas, if we ignore that whole chapter, we're not serving the existing people or the people that we're trying to attract to come here. Because we don't have the infrastructure, that is not going to change, we have EMS and fire, we have a lot of people that are volunteer. We don't have the infrastructure that supports that significant amount of growth that exists, and so if we are using. And this was what we did a commissioner chat where EMS kind of discussed the times and how their service to the community happens. You are increasing a specific area and that could negatively impact not just the area that you're in, but the surrounding areas and that. You're committed to doing whatever you need to do, which that's a fantastic response to give, but I just don't see that we have made that plan. Which you can make, there isn't, there it's not a a rule that you can't say, hey, let's create a more clear plan. Moving forward for this area and the development so we can. Identify the growth of this particular area, this is a lot of growth all at once, knowing that we identify. Problems with our current infrastructure, with our ability to take on taxes, our ability even receive the money for. Uh, new construction, it negatively impacts the people that are here today for the person that is going to come here. It is, I understand the frustration of the community because oftentimes. The community hears, we need to help people be able to move here, and that is hard to hear when you're here because. My job as a commissioner is to make sure that I'm. Understanding the development and growth and the first and foremost has to be the infrastructure to support the people that are here. I can't reasonably ignore the health and safety welfare of the people here because somebody wants to move here. I have to have that good foundation so that we can support more people moving in, so that we can build our economy. We are bringing in more people that need from our infrastructure than we are that don't need from the infrastructure, and so what does that get us? We don't, we see what we need to build up the infrastructure, that's what my concern is, I think it's a valid concern. Um, and I think that it's actually something that can be fixed by actually just having that. A a bigger, broader plan of the development of this area, um, and having that conversation with. Cutney, having the conversation with community, uh, because I don't think you should have to, you know, sell your soul on development. Uh, but I think that there's an opportunity to increase communication with the plan that addresses both of the concerns that you guys have. I just wanted to know there's no rule and it wouldn't be, it's not a penalty, there would be no rule saying to let's create a better, clearer plan.
Commissioner Williams, I agree with you that there is no rule, but we do have. Law and ordinance, and law and ordinance makes clear that the applicant. Has jumped through the hoops and process. That are currently on our books, private property rights is not always a weed. Private property rights is what Lupa begins with and what our comprehensive plan. Begins with in regards to, I think that one of the things that makes. That we have differences of opinions. And I'd like to address some of those to begin with, in regards to property rights. The applicant has clearly stated repeatedly that he is willing. To meet the goals, ordinances, and statutes of the way that this property is zoned, but not as people want it to be, but as it is. According to the laws that exist at the time of application. It's not just about people that want to move here, it is also about providing people that grew up here. The opportunity to have the same lifestyle that multiple generations have had. I can say in regards to education, the people that are leaving are our children. Because there are not enough groups that are within this, in regards to economic development. Everybody's economics are different, and these, this proposed subdivision. Is very similar from an overhead view, and if you look at the site plan of the existing neighborhood. The biggest complaint for me is that. The utilities are there, where do we want? Uh, development to happen, do we want sprawl or do we want it in areas where there are services? And the applicant has gone above and beyond. Standard associated with such a project. I do completely respect the wishes of the city of community in regards to the. Their gated access and then the C U P. Planning for the future as we exist with the ordinance and laws of today. There are challenges with that dirt, but that is addressed through engineering, which has met the criteria established in code. Transportation. As the chairman of B D A, in discussions with I T B for months. In reference to this project, I'm particularly aware it has been a serious action in that instance. But people are going, continue to want to move here. And housing is also a key component, and having housing. Is absolutely important to the continued health, welfare, and safety of this mountain. Which I, which is the reason why we made it in support.
Yeah.
I just want to see if you weren't here to engage in personal. Just wanted to see if you had anything to add, I am prepared to make a motion, I don't want to be any more deliberative.
I do, because what I'm talking about is actually what we are charged with doing, local land use plan. And so I'm asking that we do a plan for the development, so it isn't uh, outside of what the obligation is, it's actually within the obligation. And as we're creating the plan, that's what we're here to do, you don't have to say yes, you can say, let's go back to the drawing board. And let's take a look at some of the issues and concerns that are unresolved or in cases, I think it could be even that they're just not. Um, known by the other side that something has been actually addressed, it doesn't have to. It doesn't have to ignore that our job is to help and safety and when we're talking about housing. In Bonner County, people are often, you know, it's the people that live here can't afford afford to live there. Or, you know, we're not, we're not supposed to be identifying, I need um, the kid of a person who lived here to buy this house, it's just we're buying a house, we're selling a house, it's just a house. It's not my job to say your kid needs to be able to afford, it's only to look at, are we paying attention to the health, safety, property rights, making sure that we're. Developing responsibly, somebody's going to buy the house, and the reality is is, that's like seeing a. developing responsibly. Somebody's gonna buy the house, and the reality is, is just like seeing affordable housing, once you hit that half million dollar range. Or is it really Bonner County that's buying houses? If we wanna be honest about that, it's not what we, we're attracting people to come here and hoping that they'll come here not just with a desire to live here, but that they'll contribute to the infrastructure that is Bonner County. But the reality is of the people that are coming here, the contribution to the infrastructure isn't what we're getting, because they're either work at homes or are paying another state, or they're not working in the county. And so the infrastructure strain is then borne by the people that are here. And because that is part of the power of Bonner County, we have to pay attention to what we have now, which is a failing infrastructure. Cause there's no argument that we need to build up our roads, we need to be able to have people work. But it doesn't mean that we say, let's just build houses, because that is, at where you meet the market, a lot of other areas in Illinois, they're getting big business that come, and then it pushes their housing down. It's not Bonner County, we're getting retired people or people that don't need to go into an office to work. But then I, I, I did the same thing. I worked at home, I didn't work for So it's, it's not what we think it is, but I definitely impacted my area's infrastructure right on board, so. I'm not, I'm saying it's an opportunity to do a better job at planning, and I think that's partly what our community is frustrated with across Bonner County and a lot of counties is moving forward with the development before we've done the planning, um, the future planning, not just the project itself, but the future planning of said development. And then what we're left with is roads that don't fit to prepare about the routes that we want them to or need them to, because we can't get to the roads, because we're growing so much, more people are traveling on the roads, and I think that's you guys have been responsive to a lot of the concerns, but looking at the items that are in Lupa, that's the obligation of the county. And there's nothing wrong with going back to the drawing board to say, how can we resolve this and get a better job. And, and that's my recommendation, and I know, um. If you guys wanna make a motion to take a vote on it, but my position is that this, it's a, it's a great idea, development is reasonable, but I think it's an opportunity to go back and I think it helps developers out as well, because you have, there are a few people that said, you know, they want to be part of what's happening, they agree it's a good spot. It's an opportunity to have a good relationship between, because I think sometimes developers give you know, the kind of the nasty thought of, you just wanna make the profit and run away, and yeah, that's actually what it means. That's kind of what, that's kind of what I uh don't want to um move forward with.
The proposed transportation system is designed adequately and safely.
Do you hear me okay?
Uh, yes, Mr. Bradshaw, we can hear you. Did I finish? Uh, by reducing the quality or level of service or creating hazards or congestion. The proposed subdivision is designed to comply with the design criteria for subdivision setports in subchapter six point two of Water County Code. The proposed subdivision is in accord with the Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. This decision is subject to the conditions of approval as amended during this hearing. The decision is based on the evidence submitted up to the time the staff report was prepared and testimony received at this hearing. I further move to adopt the findings of fact and conditions of approval as amended during this hearing and direct the planning staff to draft written findings and conclusions to reflect this decision and transmit to all interested parties. This action does not result in taking a private property. The action that could be taken to obtain the approval of preliminary plat is to complete the conditions of approval as adopted. Is there a second?
A second for motion to advance it for vote.
We'll call vote. Yes.
Uh, my vote is no, based on conclusion one, two, three, five, and eight are not in compliance in my review of this record.
Commissioner Bradshaw, are you, we're, uh, the vote has been called, are you a yes or no on this?
That would be a yes.
The motion passes. Our next action will be, we'll spend one hour. Staff, would you like a recess? Okay, it is four twenty seven, and I will take a five minute recess before getting to Mr. Bill.
Yeah, five minute recess.
Yeah, five minute recess.
Yeah, what's up?
Hey, Jen, are you gonna make me your host? Thank you.
Yes.
What are you talking about?
Community chat.
I'll talk to you about that maybe.
It is four thirty two on October second, twenty twenty three. We're in the Bonner County Administration Building. And we are coming out of recess and we are now about to regard. File. AM zero zero one zero dash two three. And I will turn it over to Daniel Britt with the Planning Department.
Thank you, Commissioners, good afternoon. We're here to discuss AM zero zero one zero dash through two three. It's a map amendment for ag forest land to rural residential. So, Bonner County Revised Code states that staff and the governing bodies shall review the particular facts and circumstances. Of each proposed middle proposal submitted and shall determine whether there's adequate evidence that the for- the proposal. Is in accordance with the general and the specific objectives of the comprehensive plan. So this request was reviewed against implementation component of the land use and the concrete of the comprehensive plan. Excuse me. So currently, the parcel there that's, the three parcels are highlighted in purple on your screen. Um, the current land use designation is ag forest land. Where the comp plan of vision is ag forest land. Is that recognizes where super slopes prevail thirty percent or greater and transportation is provided by private roads or US Forest Service or state roads. Urban services are not available and residential development challenges are present due to slope. Or soil conditions, hazard areas, and lack of police or fire service. The applicants have requested to go to rural residential, which avisions. Um, areas that provide residential development, areas where urban services are not available, and so it may vary up to thirty percent. These areas include hazardous areas and critical wildlife habitats in where lower density. Reduce potential impacts to resources and exposure to loss, property or lives. Small scale agricultural uses and residential developments are permitted in the rural residential designation. The applicant is requesting a comprehensive map. Um, plan map amendment for mag forest lands to rural residential. The proposal. Is for three lots that were plotted prior to the adoption of Bonner County Comprehensive Plan. Use section in two thousand and five. Historically, the parcels have been comprehensive plan designation of rural. The proposal is made up of three lots. It's approximately twenty five acres and is adjacent to Baldy Mountain Road. So as mentioned, um, as we see the parcels here highlighted in purple, it is three platted lots. Um, one is twelve point seven six acres approximately, and the other two approximately six point two eight acres. Current zoning is AF twenty and the land use designation is ag forest land. Access to the proposal is adjacent to Baldy Mountain Road, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained sixty foot wide paved and also gravel right away. In addition to the, uh, northeast section of this proposal.
And can you get a little closer to the mic?
Just a mission. Is that better?
Thank you. That's better.
Bald Eagle Drive is a. So some, or sorry, so environmental factors and services, uh, to the. Parcel and proposal. The site does contain map slopes that range from zero. Up to and greater than thirty percent. It does not contain any mapped wetlands. It does not contain any mapped waterfront or streams. It is within special flood hazard X. Zone X, so the chances of flooding are minimal. Individual services that are available to the parcel and currently there is an individual well, an individual septic system. Fire protection is Westside Fire District, powers through Northern Lights Incorporated. Natural gas is provided by Vista Utilities. It is within Lake Pondreys School District number eighty four. So looking at the development of the property, the puzzle is currently developed with a single family dwelling that is served by a private well, individual septic system. In addition to this utility's provides national, natural gas to the properties, Northern Lights Incorporated provides electricity. Public services afforded to these properties are the Bonner County, Bonner County Sheriff, Westside Fire District, Bonner County Road and Bridge Department. Like Pondreys School District and Transportation Number Eighty Four. And is within the city of Dover's, uh, City of Area Impact, and that's what we're looking highlighted in turquoise there. Highlight in pink is the city of Sandpoint, and there was some discussion at the zoning hearing about that. So, as mentioned, the access. Uh, to the proposal is adjacent to Baldy Mountain Road, which is a Bonner County owned and maintained paved. And gravel sixty foot, uh, wide right away, approximately five miles Baldy Mountain Road is currently counting. Is currently county maintained and approximately three miles is paved. This proposal is less than a quarter mile from where the pavement ends and the gravel starts. Land use component of the comprehensive plan, Bonner County post. Land use matrix table for general transportation criteria recognizes that public right of ways, either paved or gravel. Meet the international code standard, fire code standard, are appropriate services for the rural residential designation. Gravel, the gravel maintained portion of Baldy Mountain Road continues for approximately one mile west of this proposal. The county maintained road there we see highlighted in green. That slide. So as mentioned earlier, the proposal does have some slopes. That contain map slopes from zero to thirty percent or greater, approximately five acres of the twenty five acres are mapped at slopes thirty percent or greater. With most of the acreage having map slopes between twenty or between fifteen and thirty percent. Grade, therefore, map slopes of thirty percent or greater are not the prevailing feature of this proposal. Um, that slide towards the, or the picture to the bottom is a look at, uh, our soils layer. Um, they're both a, a pond array series. And they're suited for timber production, grazing, hay and pasture. The series, series of soils is classified as not prime farmland. And areas with this soil type can be used for home sites. But predominantly, it is within the pond array rock, which is the blue. There's a small sliver that's in the pond array silt loam, which is the green sliver we see. On the southeast side of the, um, proposal. The following agencies are routed June twenty eighth for comments. Idaho Department of Water Resources and Department of Environmental Quality. Each submitted responses that you'll find in your packet this afternoon, Idaho Fish and Game replied with no comment. We do not hear back from all our agencies. So public comments were received. The overlying theme was concern for wildlife. Concerned over development, property values in the area, vacation rentals, traffic, cost of infrastructure, and the parcel size. Complete, complete comments are within your binders this afternoon. The zoning commission, uh, voted unanimously to recommend approval of this request. That concludes my presentation. I can take any questions the Commissioners may have.
I have no questions.
On the community's, uh, design element is the size of the lots in line with what the area is.
It is. So if we look to the. To the south of that proposal and slightly to the west, most of those parcels are ranging anywhere from just over five acres. To eight acres approximately. Um, there are some larger parcels to the further west. The parcels that we see highlighted in blue there are owned by the city. That's the, uh, gun range. So that is a larger chunk that is in that rural, uh, residential designation and all those other parcels are within it are a little bit smaller than the proximity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, I'm sorry. Did, yes. So to correct the record, it's the planning commission. Is the recommendation was unanimous.
Commissioner Bradshaw, do you have any questions for Mr. Britt? Oh.
I, I keep getting muted. Anyway, no, I don't have any questions. Sorry. Thank you, Daniel.
Thank you, Mr. Britt. This time we'll turn it over to the applicant. Was represented in this case.
This is unpro-.
Can you hear me now, Commissioner Bradshaw?
Howdy.
Hey.
It had a work.
All right. Again, as I, I picked up, I appreciate staff correcting my line on that, going to, uh, Bonner, staff report, but, uh, just to give you one more thing. So, as presented by staff, and as detailed in the staff report, this request would bring the central property to the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan. Past designation by the county mistakenly generalized this area to all ag forests. The property. Whereas there are some bedrock out parts, probably doesn't. Mapping shows that they are limited and under and area. These are the areas of the thirty percent best slope that we identified by staff. However, there are also multiple building benches within the property, providing home sites and areas for outbuildings. These benches are actually best access off of Bald Eagle Drive, the road that goes up through platted lands now, rather than off of Baldy Mountain Road. Um, the westward path of these properties, uh, all has a bedrock out drop all around. The Baldy River, so it would have to be extensive blasting and so forth, and then again, sure it could be built to a lot of, um, statements. The best way to access the western part of the beach is from six hundred yards, basically, about a. As staff said, the property is not prime farmland, and I was only a matter of glad you were kind of there. Property use, uh, by our district, is located along a county maintained portion of Baldy Road, which is also a school bus yard. Has access to power and natural gas. Natural gas, something that's west of the county. Therefore, when factual information regarding this property is applied to the comprehensive, the rural designation fits. Existing ag forest designation does not fit. He addressed some of the, uh, public comment that came in prior to tonight. Let the record show that the Wolfslagers are a young local family that chose to be educated in Idaho and chose to stay and develop careers and raise a family. They are not from out of the area, just trying to profit off of Bonner County. Mrs. Wheat is from Sandpoint also. She and her husband own the property with the intention of moving back there. The property is currently used for their enjoyment and at times through an Airbnb type of service. Both owners are trying to enhance their properties and control the property adjacent to them. Currently, these properties are nonconforming property parcels with the comprehensive plan. Therefore, they are grandfathered in, and there's certain rights that are preserved by, by grandfathering, but it's also assumed that grandfathering uses are going to go away. Well, if you look at this, the five acre parcels are not going to go away. We know that's not going to happen. Cause that would mean that the public would have to step up and start doing an eminent domain, pulling those parcels off of, off of the map. We know that that's not going to happen. So if we look again at the area mapping and note the numerous small parcels that have the same designation that is being requested. It brings us into the same type of compliance. Long range plan is to equally divide the twelve acre track into two six acre parcels adjoining their individual properties. This process will create just one more lot to the area. It will also provide access to the twelve acres from within the existing flats using Bald Eagle Drive rather than Baldy Road and thus eliminating the. Thus eliminating the need to try to construct an access directly off of Baldy. We ask that you update the two thousand and eight decision to better reflect the area and grant the request to come into compliance with the comprehensive plan. And that would be my presentation. And if you have any questions for me?
I don't. That was very detailed.
Very efficient and succinct.
Thank you.
Mr. Bradshaw, do you have any questions for Mr. Brian with the Y, not brain? No, I think that's cooler personally.
I have none.
All right. This time we will move to the public hearing component in the interest of parties that anybody can talk to this guy. Oh. Oh. Oh, Mr., I apologize. Mr. Wheat, would you like, what, you're the applicant, yeah, the applicant, yeah. Mr. Wheat, would you like to say anything? Raise your hand online so that.
No, I'm good. Thank you so much.
Okay, um. Then in the interest of being succinct, is there any, is there a room in public hearing? Is there anybody who would like to testify in support of this? Mutual. Close. I'm now closing the public hearing. Uh, is there any rebuttal you would like to get to the testimony presented before us? Good. Uh, is there any testimony that staff would like to give, or any other problem that's really not the.
I think it's noteworthy that these three parcels are, are, are the subdivision that's done in the right sixties. Most parcels do the, the properties to the side, but we're discussing it. So just to get a bit of a start.
Uh, I will now close the public hearing and we will move to the communication. Commissioners, do you have any questions for the staff?
I have none.
Have we entertained a motion or have we skipped the application?
Well, I, I'll make a statement on the question. So, because I like to say why I do things. Um, so when I looked at this one, it looks like it is. But it is coming from all the boroughs. And the only reason I asked was because the, the design response was, uh, went to, you know, three, four. You know, when you go big or small, sometimes that. And given that, uh, this report's analysis, I actually was, I don't think it's just the, uh, it pulls it further into the comprehensive, you know, it's a similar to this place. I think that it rests in. I'd love to approve this project, file a new one, intend to approve requesting a, and use map amendment on ag forest land to rural residential. Anybody who's in a court during this, this project is a. The, um, most goes as a newer, you know, part of the, you know.
I would second that.
Site. Uh. One, the site does contain, uh, map slopes that ranges between thirty percent and forty percent.